Good evening and welcome to the March 12, 2024, meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item three is public comment. By policy and practice, we allow 21 minutes, up to 20 minutes for public comment, and up to three minutes per speaker. And the way we do this is we go to the speakers first in person, if we have one. Doesn't appear we have anyone tonight. And then we go to the online speakers. So if you're online and you wish to participate in public comment, please raise your hand, raise your virtual hand, or star nine if you're on the phone. Or star nine if you're on the phone. So if you want to participate in public comment, please let us know. We'll give people a minute just to see if they want to raise their hand. Not seeing anyone.
I don't see it, Mr. Shear. I don't see it either.
No, not seeing anyone. Going once, going twice. All right. Thank you, everyone. We'll go to item four, which is discussion approval, Chief Matt, discussion approval of, let's see how we have this, Chief Madden, Brian Walsh to discuss adding an additional apparatus for storage purposes at the proposed East Milton Fire Station. So Chief Madden, I'm the chair of our fire building committee. Mr. Walsh, would you join us?
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief. Good evening. Mr. Walsh.
Thank you.
Okay. Terrific.
Good evening, Brian.
And Mr. Fores is the, he's our owner's project manager. Another committee tonight, he joined us online, which is great. So thank you for having us. Glad to come in and clarify any confusion. But I first want to start off, I want to thank you all. I believe I saw all your faces when we had our little headquarters open house for the Select Board and others. I'm sure that you, I expect that you're thrilled with what you saw. It's great to see a facility that's not 140 years old. And so, I got my glasses on. I made notes because this topic has lent to confusion sometimes in the past, and I'm going to make sure I don't make matters worse, or try to. So the focus of tonight's discussion is really is a two-bay East Milton Fire Station versus a one-bay. It's not a review of the current overall appearance as we're about to begin more neighborhood meetings and discussions focused really on that. So a quick background. Our original plan was to go out to bid for all three fire stations. So we rushed a quick design for all three. And then, when we identified the St. Agathus property as the new location for the East Milton Station, there was some angst about how many engines would be in service in that new station. A neighborhood group even came to the town meeting to oppose that location. They had a PowerPoint presentation, and there was at least an hour-long discussion and vote. And that was one of their concerns. They were worried about, you know, a lot of fire engines right there close to the St. Agathus School. So in the end of the discussion, it was strongly supported by town meeting members for us to locate the new East Milton Station at the St. Agathus property. We emphasized that it would be a station with one active engine and three firefighters, as was and is the current situation in the current station. So we did the first design, showing only one bay is not to raise concerns about a change to move more than one active engine. This design never went out to bid as COVID hit, and we shifted not to only doing the headquarters first for a lot of reasons we've shared with you previously. We knew we would have neighborhood meetings and discussions about the station, this is the East Milton Station, before construction starts, and we will. These neighborhood meetings that we had up here at headquarters were very fruitful, helpful for us and helpful, I think, for the community. And we will be beginning those soon. As with our focus now on East Milton as the next building to tackle, our committee started focusing on the details and including the design. And we have concluded that although only one active engine will be at that location, we should be building a second bay. Note, we voted to have our architects spend approximately $70,000 to start the design with a second bay. We did not realize or think about coming to the Select Board that you might want to be involved and improve this approach. Happy to do that here tonight. Using the second bay to provide inside climate-controlled storage for other fire department vehicles and equipment and supporting the two-bay decision that actually was made back in 1950 with the existing station, although there was an active ladder truck at that location then. That changed with belt tightening related to Prop. 2 and 1/2 when that came in many years ago. So when building the current station, the equipment size and needs of the fire department since 1950 haven't decreased. They've increased. No surprise. I know the shift, excuse me, the chief has shared, you know, I realize I made a thing. The chief has shared, and I have printed copies that they'll be helpful to you, a list of the various fire department apparatus. Let me bring those up. You might.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
So the increased bay cost for the second bay at East Milton, the estimate we've been working with is just under $500,000. However, as the committee works to keep costs down, we just voted to eliminate building a, eliminate a building-length corridor, saving approximately $100,000. And we are looking at other cost-saving opportunities. So we are in the neighborhood providing a second bay again for approximately $500,000. And we have been a cost-conscious committee and taken on costs beyond our direct scope as they would save the town money. The old head, so I'm going to just cover a few things that we've taken on that were in the best interest of the town. They really weren't directly in the scope of building the new fire stations, but they saved the town money. And that was why it made sense for us to take them on. So the old headquarters building had been gutted for the sake of future outputting for the town's use, even though we were originally charged to concentrate on remodeling the first floor which to create a training and conference room. By doing this now with our contractor on site, we are spending just over $300,000, including a lot of code upgrades such as fire protection, minimal lighting, and HVAC. We had a water line replacement at the request of the Town Engineering Department in the headquarters parking lot area. That was an approximate cost of $70,000. We replaced the old slate roof on the fire station, on the old headquarters station, with a new slate roof versus asphalt shingles that we originally planned to do at the request of the town's historical commission, at the strong request. They wanted to keep that look. And there are more costs. By the way, that was about $90,000 extra, if I didn't mention it. And there are more extra costs that we've covered on behalf of the town, such as pedestrian path changes at the urging of the Master Planning Committee, you know, along the side of the station. So in conclusion, we feel we provided more than enough extra work to cover the cost of the second bay, which we strongly believe in and frankly would consider a big mistake not to do. So and again, I hashed the list of the equipment, but I'm going to turn it over now to the chief, who might want to add some comments about this.
Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight. When I first became chief, one of the things that you look at is the overall, you know, the state of the fire department and the future, where we're going. And, you know, being involved in this process, I jumped in halfway through. And I've had multiple discussions with Chief Grant about his site and, you know, for the future and where we were going. And his mindset was, he was trying to get the buildings built, and then he was pushing it off on, you know, to me, to get through to the future. So, and I thank him for that, you know.
Comes with the job.
Yeah, he did a great job. So when you look at the fire station, we had seven bays. And right now, if we only have one bay at East Milton, we will continue with seven bays. There are five bays here. There's one firehouse, a one bay in East Milton. And right now, the current plans for Atherton will have one bay for an attic, for a brand-new fire truck, a modern fire truck. It'll have two bays for ancillary equipment, but it won't fit a fire truck. So when I look at the space needs that we have right now at headquarters, we have car two and squad two in the first bay. Both, you know, when I think about fire trucks, and I talk about fire trucks, it's equipment that can't be stored outside. We have water and a lot of stuff. We have pneumatics, air. So temperature will definitely damage that. And we spend a lot of money on our equipment. As you all know, $1.6 million for a new tower, which should be coming next November, and $850,000 for a new engine, which should be coming next March. So when you spend that kind of money, you want to make sure that we have the best atmosphere to keep the apparatus. So bay one would be car two, which is the shift commander, and squad two, which is a brush truck that carries water for, you know, work in the Blue Hills. Bay two is squad one, which is a 250 UTV and a boat. The boat should stay inside. It's a rigid hull inflatable, so cold temperature will cause it to, you know, deflate. Bay three is engine one, current engine one, which I will say current engine one does not fit at the outside firehouses right now. It has a race cab, and it will not fit in engine two's current quarters or engine four's current quarters. Bay four, we have ladder one, which will be replaced next year with tower one. And I'll go with bay five, which is engine three, our spare. It's a 1990, 1999 E1. And we need to have an adequate spare. East Milton, we have engine two. There is an empty bay at engine two. I don't know. We've talked before that the floor was failing at engine two, and we had to shore it up. So at the request of the structural engineers, we're keeping that bay empty just to make sure we don't add anything until we actually can move out of any extra weight, until we can move out of there. And currently at Atherton Street, we have engine four, and we have a hazardous materials response trailer, which is a small trailer that has Speedy Dry and equipment that we could use in a hazardous materials response. And again, when you look at that, that fills up all our bays. If we have one bay at East Milton, that fills all of our bays. And like I said, we're going, next March, we're getting engine, a new engine one. So that will have to take, if we don't get the second bay, one of the engines will have to go outside. And that's, you know, at the request of Charlie Colligan, the town's mechanic, he has put a lot of time and effort into our spare apparatus. And his belief would be to keep two spare apparatus. When we get the new one, keep a current engine one and the current engine three. We've put a lot of time and money into this stuff, this equipment. And it's one of those things where if an engine goes out of service, then we're, and then something else happens. If we blow a tire or something, right now, we're able, well, in the future, we'll be able to have a spare engine ready to go. That's the idea, is we should be able to take our personal equipment, move it to the next engine, have it in service, ready to go at a moment's notice. And the same thing with the ladder truck. You know, that's a 2006 ladder truck. And Charlie and his crew has done an amazing job with preventative maintenance and maintenance in general. We should keep that ladder truck. We need to keep that ladder truck as a spare, you know, just to take an engine or a ladder out of service for the afternoon so we can change the oil and change the tires. We need to have that equipment for us. So that's why I'm requesting the second bay, and I've asked, requested it of the Fire Station Building Committee. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Comments or questions from the members? Mr. Zoll.
Thank you for this. Very helpful. So the idea for the extra bay in East Milton would be to keep one of the spare engines there?
Yes.
Okay. And so typically speaking, a spare engine, you're not really ever using it unless there's an emergency situation or one of the engines has gone down.
Yes, and I forgot to mention that. The firehouse in East Milton will have space for three firefighters. It'll have a fourth dorm room for blizzards, hurricanes, when we actually staff, beef up the staffing. But that's it. It's not going to six bedrooms or dorm rooms or anything like that.
And just for clarity, for some of the residents that might be listening, three firefighters means it's just one truck. That's what has to go out on one truck, is three firefighters.
Yes. We staff each engine with a lieutenant and two firefighters.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, gentlemen. So I do remember a time when spare trucks were parked in tents, portable tents at the DPW yard, which is really not an ideal situation. And it is true, most people don't realize that that spare piece has been kept in engine two for at least the last 20, 25 years. As Mr. Walsh, Chair Walsh knows, we had a recent discussion just a little bit with the St. Agathus staff about this. If I'm correct, it doesn't really change the look of the building. We're still talking like a one-door, a one, and now you go.
Yeah, so Richard, we're working on that.
All right, say what. But that was one of the things. We tried to do this in a way that it looks the same while accommodating the space to be able to house two pieces of apparatus in there. I know I go back to historic things a lot, and I don't like to. But my father was on the police station building committee in the 1970s. And one of the things that during his time as chief, which both Chief Murn and myself, and I'm sure Chief King if you're here, would reiterate, was the one of the biggest mistakes that they made when they built the police station was they only built two bays. And the entire 30-something-vehicle fleet and all equipment just sits outside today. So I think the fact that, just like some of the work they did to prepare the second floor of the old headquarters for us to be able to sit down and be able to use it, I think it just makes sense to do it now versus to try five, 10, 15 years from now to go and do it at probably three times the cost. I think it only makes sense. So I understand it, and I support it, Mr. Chair. I think they've done a great job managing this so far. And to the last point, when they made reference to engine four, as you recall, so engine four is the oldest building. And if you remember, at the time when we were passing the Hurley, there was a lot of concerns about the historic look of it and that it remained the same. And so in that, that really kind of restricts them to just, to want to, so that's really out of play. I think in the original designs, you can tell me if I'm wrong, Brian, there was a thought to build like a garage in the back, and that was abandoned. So I think the ability to do it here without any real heavy lifting, I think, only makes sense for us. So thank you.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I think it also does make sense to do it now. And I think it's important to meet with the neighbors in terms of the look of it and, you know, for any concerns they may have with it. And so they can understand what it's being used for and the purpose of it, why it's important to do it now, and so forth.
Yeah, absolutely. If I could respond to that. We have been looking forward to it. At the timing, I wanted to start the neighborhood meetings when we're still working with the design. And also, when we had a clearer picture of when we're going to actually start construction, because that'll be foremost on their mind. All right, well, when are you doing this and when are you doing that? So we're about that pace. And we learned a lot. And I think the town in general, as well as our committee, benefited extensively by having active sessions with the Headquarters Neighborhood Association. They were a big help. We did that, and we certainly do want to mimic that in East Milton.
Thank you.
And I don't know if it's you, Mr. Walsh, or Mr. Milano, to describe how the additional $500,000 is going to be financed? I don't know if you want.
Want me to take a shot? Okay. So again, it's, it's, right now, we're just finishing up the headquarters and the budget, fine-tuning that. And we fully expect to be able to build the East Milton Station with the second bay, with the funds that we still have available in, you know, for this purpose. Now, we do plan, and we'll need to come back when we begin Atherton Street, to look for more funds. The, what gets referred to as the Hurley Amendment, the Special Purpose Stabilization Fund, you know, one of the, there were so many brilliant things about that, in my opinion. But one of the, one of the things that was key about it was that amendment froze up to $80 million of declining debt. And we did a $32.5 million, roughly, budget for the, for the fire stations. So we plan to come back. COVID, by the way, just knocked us out of the park. I mean, and so we do plan to come back to look for additional funding that can be accomplished through that same amendment. So the taxpayers, taxes will not increase. They'll stretch out longer in the future as you add more debt to be dealt with. But that'll be our plan. But for right now, we believe with the money we have, we will be able to complete East Milton with the second bay.
And then the additional, as you described, the additional funding for Atherton Street, that'll come through the same mechanism.
Yeah, same mechanism, but we would have to, my understanding and belief is we have to go before town meeting and then the town and get the support for that.
We're a couple of years away from that.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly right. Thank you, Richard.
So, so what, what motion are we, what action are we looking for here to support the, to support the design with the second bay? Or what do we?
We have, we do have a contract amendment from the architect. So it'd be approval of the contract amendment to design with the second bay and to support a two-bay Station One for storage at this location.
I'd make that motion, Mr. Chair. Just exactly what he said.
Lynn, did you get all of that?
I was just going to say, you just took the words out of my mouth. I was going to say, Lynn, did you copy that, pal?
So it's a, so it's a motion to approve the contract amendment for design with a second bay and to support a second bay at the East Milton Fire Station. I think that's, is that fair?
That's it. That's good, yeah.
Motion's made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I think you have to do a rule call.
Yes, yes. All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you, Chief Madden. Yes, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you. Before stepping, I do want to, and I don't just say this sort of off the cuff, I want to sincerely thank you for the support of this project as we go along. You know, it's strictly, it's really important. The town expects a lot from its leaders. You have the leadership team, and your support is helpful. And I especially also want to thank Richard. Richard's public safety background in being your laser to us has been a big, big help. It really has.
What do you want, cash?
I'll give you a percentage of mine.
Thank you very much. This allows the department flexibility moving forward to fit the needs of the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item five will be deferred. I have that as the design services contract for the school project. That's, I think, still being negotiated, so we can defer on that until next time. Item six is discussion approval Milton Landing. Six A is the Dexter Southfield proposed dock. Is this?
You want to go to seven? You want to do that? I see, Mr. Guy, you want to go to here first?
Oh, if this is going to be a little while, yeah.
Yeah, let's do them first. I don't think it'll be a little while, but let's, let's.
All right. So if there's no objection, we'll take item seven out of order, which is a discussion update of the parking at the Milton Public Library with the chair of our Master Plan Implementation Committee and the chair of our library trustees and our library director. So come on up, please.
Mr. Guy is a favor. So I got it. He's getting it tonight. I said, "I owe you a favor," so you're getting your payback tonight.
I'm not the chair of the library trustees.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not anymore of this, of the, what do we even call it anymore? The building subcommittee.
Building subcommittee of trustees, all right.
But I still am the chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I'm Cheryl Tagayas.
And I'm Will Adams, I'm the library director.
And Christine Hadland, so we're the trustees. Thank you. And moving us up on the agenda too. Appreciate it.
If you could just make sure you're talking to the mic, because sometimes it gets lost in the, gets lost if we don't talk right into it.
So we did submit some slides that we'd like to have brought up, if we may. So we're going to start out with the library director and trustee talking about the needs of the library. And then we will move to how the Master Plan Implementation Committee has been working with the library and trying to help with their needs. So go ahead.
So while you're bringing up those slides, first I'd like to thank everybody for their time and their attention to this tonight. This has been a project that we've been having conversations about with multiple boards and multiple individuals within the town government for a number of years. And we're happy to present an update for you tonight. So if we want to go right ahead to slide three, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the environment that we're living in with the library and with library parking. The current parking lot holds 58 cars. And as far as staffing, there's anywhere from 12 to 15 during peak staffing times, down to four to five at night. Spaces used during our peak times, and those are our morning programming times, usually between 10 and 12. And then the afternoon, after school, three to five, three to six. And then a couple of nights a week, around seven, seven to eight-thirty. Those are our peak times when we have, you know, 52 to 58 spaces taken and people parking on Canton Avenue and some of the street parking as well. You know, just anecdotally, if you were ever to try to come to the library on a Tuesday or Wednesday morning at, say, 10:30, good luck to you. That's peak children's programming. And as we'll get to in a second, that's very popular right now. So in order to grow our programming and to talk about safety concerns, the library needs 50 to 60 additional spaces to meet the current demands. And when I talk about current demands, in fiscal '23, we had over 800 programs at the library. These are just library programs. These are not rooms booked by other organizations or town committees. That was up over fiscal '22. We're already over 500 for this fiscal year. For programming, we had over 17,000 people attend programs in fiscal '23. We're already over 13,000, you know, just two-thirds through the year, this year. The numbers are continuing to go up. I'm not exactly sure how we're fitting people in, but we are, and it's popular. You could see the slides that show the children's programming is the most popular programming. And that's part of our concern with the parking is that a lot of caregivers with strollers, with multiple young children, and when they can't find spots and they're parking on the street, there's an added level of concern there. If they are trying to cross the street, if they find parking at Town Hall, that's an added level of concern. And similarly, especially during the day in these times, we have more of our senior population using the library. And there's concerns about having to walk greater distances from Canton Ave versus closer to the actual front door of the library. So if we go to the next slide, you'll see some of the reasons we would like to expand. Our rooms are regularly used by outside groups. They're also used by town committees. They're used by local nonprofits like youth sports. Sometimes the hospital or local realtors will use them. Some of our local legislators will use them for office hours. And sometimes we have to turn groups away, and part of the reason is we're, we're busy and the rooms are booked, but also we can't double book too many things. We can't use all of our meeting rooms at the same time if we know we're having a very busy program. There's just not parking available to offer that. If we have a children's program going on, we don't often book an adult program at the same time. We really have to be cognizant of that. Why do people like the library? Well, I could go on and on, but we don't want that right now. I will say, why do they want to use the rooms? Part of it's the technology. We have a very good and up-to-date technology with overhead and sound at the library. There's access to a kitchenette, so a lot of groups will want to do like a small lunch or snacks at their program in size. We have rooms that can accommodate between eight to 100 people, so you could have a small committee meeting, or you could have a concert or a recital or something like that. These are some of the things that draw people to use our space, and it should also be said there's a lack of spaces within Milton to have any of these kinds of meetings right now. So the library is one of the last places where we can have these public meetings for people. If we go to the next slide, we just talk about our goals, and I've mentioned safety. You know, safety is a concern for people of all ages, but especially the families using the library for programming on, on a daily basis. Our concern is capacity. You know, we, in order to continue to grow as an organization and to meet the needs of, of our families, we would need to grow the space size so we can fit people in the building and in their cars. We would be increasing our programming to meet these needs, but right now, we can't do that. And also, it's an opportunity for us to go green. We do not currently have any charging stations at the library. Charging stations take up slightly more space than a, a normal parking space, so this would allow us to offer more charging spaces or offer charging spaces, because it wouldn't be a reduction in our current parking. For the library, we'd be able to offer multiple sessions of popular children's programs because we'd have more place for people to park. We'd be able to offer programs simultaneously, so we could have people in the story hour room and in the keys room, and it would make the, the building more available to people to book for outside groups while we're also doing the library program. I'm gonna turn it over to Chris.
Hello. Thank you again for letting us come tonight to give you an update. So I don't know if I've been on this subcommittee for this long, but we've been working on parking for a long time for the library. When the library was rebuilt or updated, renovated, whatever, we started having a problem where people loved it. They loved the space, they loved to come, and it's full all the time. And parking became an issue very early on. We actually had, prior to the Yellow House being purchased by the current owner, there was a dentist that came to the trustees and was very interested in purchasing that building and turning it into an office, and was going to offer us part of the land on the side towards the library and in the back for us to park. So we had a lot of hopes for that, but it didn't come to fruition. So in 2015, we turned to the town and talked at that time to the, the town planner. We met with the town engineer. We met with the Conservation Commission and really looked to see if there was any way to be doing some parking along Reed's Dale. So, I don't know if you remember, there used to be parking in the street along that road before the library was renovated. We weren't looking to, to put in a lot that was the capacity that we're seeking to solve all of our problems, but we thought if we could do a little side lot that went along Reed's Dale, maybe we could do some angled parking and maybe service the, the employees or maybe 15 or 20. So we pursued that for a while with, with some of the town employees. We had a wetland survey done back there, and the Conservation Commission came in, and we just couldn't build anything that would be far enough away from where the wetlands would come in. So it was an idea that was rejected, and we're still looking for parking. So COVID hit, and I'll have to say, we were kind of on a little sabbatical for a while, I think, looking for parking because we didn't need it. But in 2021, we re-engaged with the town planner, currently Tim and Josh, and the engineer, Marina, to try to see if there was other options that we could come up to with parking. And at that time, we were referred to the, the Master Implementation Committee, because parking and the library parking and parking for the whole town is a part of their long-term strategy, and it really fit well that we would try to work with them. And I just have to say that the, the whole MPIC committee, everyone that's on there has been very, very supportive of having us come. We've met with them many, many times, and we really appreciate the work that they've done. So, the planning department themselves did some of their own parking analysis of the area, and I put a couple of the bullets down here of what they actually found at that time. So we're still seeking options, and I'm gonna let Cheryl jump in here and tell you where, where we are at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris and Will. So, just to back up a little bit, the master plan itself does have a recommendation that we work with the library to help meet their needs, and parking was identified in that plan, which was approved in 2015. So, the, the need has been there, and the, the Master Plan Implementation Committee has led other planning initiatives. As Richard knows, the Milton Landing, the Wharf, was a project that started with the Master Plan Implementation Committee and thankfully.
Hasn't ended yet.
And thankfully turned over to the Select Board for continued work. So, we were happy to work with the library to help, and the planning department's been helpful as well. So one of the first things we talked about was, well, we need to understand how your parking's being used, and if there's times in which it's not over capacity, and whether there's other options for finding parking spaces. And so, with the fire station construction, it's a little bit of a challenge around Town Hall because there are different parking needs than there would be when the station's finished. So, since that's not quite done, there may be additional parking utilization study updates that should be done. But at the time it was done, and I think Will did a good job summarizing what was found, is that the library parking spots are full 80 to 90% of the time. And I did drive by the library today at 10:30, and Canton Ave was full, fully parked. There are other times that it's, it's full, and if we think about Town Hall, the parking, Town Hall's pretty full during the day as well. And I think we'll find, even after the construction, that that's true. So if you'll go to the next slide, please. So this, hopefully you can make out that the library is the white-roofed building sort of center-right, and Town Hall would be a little center-left. And the, some of the things that have already been mentioned are the parking along Reed's Dale that was deemed not feasible. That would be to the bottom of the, the library where there's that red rectangle. The existing parking lot, then to the left of it. Around Town Hall, there are 58 existing parking spaces, including those dedicated now to the fire station. Additionally, what we, in the master plan world, we've been talking about this as a campus. So in this campus, at First Parish, there's 37 parking spaces, and at First Congregational, there's 27. In a 2020 survey that was conducted by the planning department, those churches were reached out to as well, and First Congregational, oh, they both run daycare centers, so they do have some needs during the day for their parking spaces. And that was COVID at that time, so, you know, an update to that survey is probably warranted as well. But the, the thought is there really isn't adequate additional capacity around Town Hall to meet the needs of the library. So we went to where else might there be a place that parking could be found? Actually, before I go to that, I'll also mention that way back in 2012, when the parking spaces were striped on Canton Ave, the engineering department recommended a crosswalk roughly at the high point of, you know, Canton Ave rises up and rises down. So you can see it, it's like a, looks like a white line there that's crossing Canton Ave, and that's the recommendation from 2012. But the, the, I'm gonna mention a few studies and a few engineers that were engaged, and I want to say that the, the MPIC and the library shared in the expense of these consultants that were engaged. So, an engineering firm was asked to take a look at this location for the crosswalk. They agreed that this was the best location, and the DPW is now proceeding with the engineering final, I understood final drawings were due this week, and then that crosswalk will be implemented, I think, as, as soon as the, the contractors are available to do it. So next, what we looked at was town-owned property on the other side of the Yellow House that Chris referred to, associated with the high, right across the street from Town Hall, the high portion of the property is right on Canton Ave. It drops off towards the police station and, and wetlands. So we focused on the higher elevation part, right along Canton Ave. And we had the Conservation Officer, Steve Ives, flag the wetlands, and then we engaged an engineering firm to do a survey and to include the wetlands on the survey. So we have a topographic survey, which maps the wetlands. And then, if you go to the next slide. We did some preliminary layout on the, at the committee level and at the town department level that we then sent to, and asked an engineering company to take a look at in greater detail. And what you see here is from the engineering company. So the police station would be to the bottom, and the Yellow House would be to the right, and Town Hall would be to the top. You don't see Town Hall in this. You can see some lines that, on, on my plan are blue and red, would appear to be a little hard to read up here, but that's, the wetland would be the one that's blue and what looks like black here. And then there's a red line, and that's a do-not-disturb line from the wetland. And then there's a 100-foot buffer, which is right through where that parking layout is. So, we studied what was physical fit here. So we also had an engineering firm take a look at the zoning, take a look at the, what's called a, I guess, an initial feasibility analysis. So the site, we think, is physically capable of handling a structure here for parking. What you'll remember, if you think of the library, is the land slopes down, so it takes a structure, a wall, to basically build a parking lot that's fairly level. Because of this slope in the topography, you can have parking at one level that's accessed towards the right at the higher end, and you can have another level below it that's accessed on, from the left side without needing an internal ramp. So it's a way to get two levels of parking in without having to go up. You're basically going down. So if you go to the next slide, please. So there was conversation about how there's such little town-owned land to use for the various needs of the town. We've seen that come up recently, right?
Do you know who you're talking to?
So, you know, some would question whether you should, we should just use town-owned land for parking only. And so we said, well, what else might this, if it was possible to build something on top of this parking? It could be affordable housing. It could be a municipal use, whether it's a teen center, youth center, community center, municipal office, or it could be something where it's private, private office, medical office, et cetera. We didn't go into that in terms of what the highest demand might be, but we did look at a physical fit. And so the, that, up on the, the drawing on the right side, you'll see the slope is kind of that line sloping down, so Canton Ave towards the left, sloping towards the police station on the right. And you can see two levels of parking and then two levels of building up above that. So from Canton Ave, what you'd have is the first level, which could have a café and the parking. The café is something identified in the master plan as the center of town functions. There's no commercial use. There's a small, I think, facility within the library, but it doesn't provide much vending machine.
I think it's a machine. I saw last week it's a machine.
So, so there is opportunity to provide a small café, coffee shop, sandwich shop on the first floor with parking and then fully parking below. Could be two levels of housing up above for 20 units, or it could be approximately 20,000 square feet of other kind of space. And so we, we engaged a cost estimator.
Now we're talking. Now we're, now we're.
So we could go to the, actually, just let me say that if we did the café, we'd be looking at 50 spaces. If we did just two levels of parking, no other use, we'd be looking at 60 spaces, 30 on each floor. So now with that, let's go to the, to the next slide. So, building structured parking, these were estimated by a company called A.M. Fogarty. I'll point out that they use Chapter 149 pricing, and that's the public bid law. So if this were a municipal project, that would be required. If this were privately developed project, that would not be required. But the, so the parking-only option of 60 spaces was estimated to cost, in construction costs, of $5 million, which, doing the math, comes out to $84,000 a space. If you added other uses to that, both of those uses came out to about 17.4 million. And if we use the 84,000 a space, we can assign 2 and 1/2 million to 30 public parking spaces, and we can assign $1 million for café, corn shell, which means it's built out by whoever operates the café, and then 14 million for 20 spaces and 20 units of housing, which comes out to about $700,000 of cost per unit for the housing, including the parking. And so that, this does not have a market feasibility analysis. This is just on the estimate, and we wanted to bring it to you at this point. So I'll just go to the, the next one, then we can talk about next steps.
Think you get a check tonight?
And then, in, you know, the, if it's all municipal use, obviously you're, you're assuming more of the cost for the parking spaces for the municipal cost, right? So, really, we, the committee discussed this. We talked about what our next steps might be. You know, if this were purely ready to go for a construction project, this would probably go to something to you, or you might, or in the library, you might work together to point a building committee. If you feel as if it needs more due diligence or more planning effort, more public outreach effort, it could stay with the Master Plan Implementation Committee for a little longer. What I would say is one of the things that we would want to work, I would suggest we would do, would work with a public process to engage the interests of the non-parking components of this and see what opportunities there are for public-private partnerships in terms of how this could get funded. I mean, one of these things, one of these uses could be a revenue source to help pay debt, and so there are companies out there that could help evaluate that. And then I would say also, the survey does not include the trees. I think it would be important for us to understand what the tree, the impact on tree loss would be, and then further some geotechnical study on the soils, which, again, I think a partnership between the library and the, and the Master Plan Implementation Committee could help advance a little bit more due diligence on that. And with that, I'll turn it back to Chris and Will to see if they want to add to that before we take questions.
So I just want to add to what Cheryl said and what we told you is that we've been looking at parking for over 10 years to try to see some expansion of parking, and the past couple of years is the first time that we've actually seen some real potential for progress in, in solving our problems. So we are really anxious to continue work on this. It's worked well with MPIC. We'd love to see that continue. It gives us a focal point. You know, in the past, as I said, we worked with the town planner and the town engineer, but they have obviously other priorities, and we weren't really the first priority there. So, you know, we've been able to engage with MPIC on a regular basis, and it's been really helpful for, for us to move forward. So that would be something that we would really like. I think we're all open to parking plus another option to service the town. That's, I think we all would support that. However, our first priority is supporting the needs of the library. And so I have, we have asked for these estimates or these designs to be maybe revisited and looked at, because the first option is the only one that really offers the amount of parking that we've requested. Although the other two have 50 spaces, we'd have to share those, so we would maybe get like 30, and sometimes we might get 35 or 40, but they might not even meet our minimum requirements for some additional parking. So we would look to work towards, seeing if those things could be looked at more and further, so. And, and as Cheryl said, you know, the trustees have contributed twice towards some of the design and work that's going, and I would expect that we would continue to do that if we could keep going forward. So we're looking for your help and support in that.
Will, are you all set? Comments or questions? Just do well.
Can you go back to the slide, the doll slide? Let's get to the nuts and bolts of this.
You have a check?
No, no, not for this one, no. But I'm just, so I'm thinking, just, so, option one, 5 million. If you went with option one, which would just gain you 50 spaces, so you talk, 60 spaces, I'm sorry, so you're talking about a 5 million capital project, correct? So, if you went with option two or three? So, um, if you went with option two or three, specifically option two, how much do you think, Cheryl, that the, that a residential partnership could offset the cost of the 17 million?
So, that's what I'd like to spend a little bit more time digging into. Sorry, can you hear?
Yeah.
I think that's something we'd need to spend a little bit more time, uh, digging into. At our meeting where we discussed some of this, we did have members of the Affordable Housing Trust there, including the chair, Julie Kramer. Um, they were very interested in this site for, uh, affordable housing, 100% of the housing be affordable. So, that would change the, um, uh, you know, how much perhaps you could offset if you're trying to, you know, keep your units affordable. If it were, um, a business use, like a medical office, or a market-rate housing, you know, your offset to the parking would be higher, probably. So, it would, again, be one of those, um, you know, what would be the primary goals that we would want to achieve with this piece of property.
Can I just, so, because if you, if you go to 5 million, so let's say it's 5 million. Either way, you're going to get the queue on the capitalist, and there's, as you know, we're looking at, at both, what's the follow-up, right? The possibility of a follow-up, I can't, it's not a dead exclusion. Yeah, we're going to, either way, we're looking at a dead exclusion on the schools. So, we know that's, like, already, that's the, to me, that's, I don't want to speak for my other car, that's the closest on the horizon. And then, we've got another annually, how many million a year? Nick, I don't even know how many million a year, the, I mean, the capitalist is just, so, that, to me, any way, and I'm just speaking, having been in the capital for eight, seven years now, is that any way you could come to look at what you just answered me, I think helps you. I just, anything with public and a private partnership just definitely, and it helps you. It may not get you everything that you want, but it gets you a lot closer, a lot faster for, for Will and Chris than if you just get the queue for 5 million dollars on a, I don't think we're funded a 5 million dollar, I mean, just on a, without a bond, without, oh, without a, a dead exclusion, or, I don't think we're funded, I think the biggest this year is a 2 million to the schools, and that, we did that, as we're bonding it. So, um, we're done with this year, but you want to get on, I would say to you, you want to come before capital early next year, just to kind of, because it's not, it's, right, Nick, it's not even on the, this isn't even on the list? It's not even on there now? Thank you, that's, that's all. Just, I was just looking, big picture, and trying to, understanding your need and how, ways to do it faster versus longer, if I said that right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Richard, appreciate that.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Zull? I was swi- I was...
Is that a reluctant, boy, that was an awful reluctant.
No kidding.
Well, I, you know, I appreciate this presentation, um, you know, disclosure, my mother is a librarian, so, you know, I'm always going to be partial to libraries. But, you know, I've driven by that parking lot full, uh, you know, pretty much every time, and, uh, it's tough getting in and out of there, too, um, when you're in that parking lot. So, the, the opportunity to have a second one makes sense to me. A café, I think, would do very well there. I think you think about all of the municipal employees, you know, police, fire, town hall, library that could use it. I mean, it would be a real boon to the area. But, yeah, I, I pretty much agree with Richard on the, on the, on the cost estimate. You know, I, I would love to see something from a public-private partnership angle that could help reduce the cost there, because I think the café would, would, would do well. And then, I guess the question is, what are the, you know, what are the, uh, other alternatives? It would kind of seem to be a shame to lose that kind of tree cover and just have a parking lot, um, although I know that the need is there for the, for the spaces. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Masters?
Thank you. So, I'm also on the MPIC committee as the representative. Cheryl, could you explain the dimensions a little bit of the size of what you're talking about, so people understand a little bit about that?
Yeah, we tried to keep it as efficient as possible. The engineering firm had a couple of other designs that took up a lot more land area, and we kind of asked them to go back and take a look harder to keep it, I'm sorry, I don't, this isn't big enough for me to, um, it's about a 10,000-square-foot footprint. It's not, I, I can't read the dimensions on my plan, sorry about that. If we did look to expand it to get some more parking, that would get a little bit longer. But this was the minimum to get 60 spaces. And so, if you think about every, um, parking space being about 10 feet wide, and there's 30 on the floor, and that means, and there's 15 on one side, rough math is 150 feet, doesn't count for stairs and things, but that's the, you know, the kind of magnitude. And then, a parking, a double-loaded parking with, uh, for a structure is normally about 64 feet. So, that's the approximate footprint. And the other thing I would say in terms of next steps would be a little bit more of what the scale of this building would look like if it were, you know, if it were just a parking lot, if it were a two- or three-story building, what would that look like from different vantage points, just from a massing point of view? So, I would say, um, you know, the, if, if we did continue with it, I would call it more feasibility study work to get to a recommendation and a report.
Mr. Wells?
So, let's say hypothetically, let's say you didn't go housing, and you just had a café, and we didn't put any additional municipal. Let's say we just had parking and some type of commercial café. So, would you envisage something that, and I don't want to use a national chain, so I'm going to leave them out of it. Are you, are you thinking something like, there would be like the Plate, or like, I'm dating myself, Java Joe's was when it first came.
I loved Java Joe's.
I did, too. Had the best hot chocolate ever.
Good music.
And they had great music, too. "If one of us drink coffee," that was, that was a hot chocolate. But so, I'm just thinking something that...
I do love the Plate, too, though.
I do, too. That's another story from that side. But I, I'm just thinking, because you could use the rent on the retail to help pay off the bond. I'm just...
Right. And so, we would need to speak to some commercial real estate brokers to understand what that lease, you know, what the rental income could be, the lease income could be from that space, and what the optimum size might be for an operation like that. The, um, just going back a little bit, the, uh, the master plan suggesting this, when we did some studies, we, when the fire station headquarters was finalizing their site plan, they did come to our committee, we reviewed it. Chair Walsh mentioned the pathway. We were looking at improving connections across buildings and across uses, so the council on aging, having a safe crossing point, et cetera. But at that same time, we had a forum for youth, and we had participants from Pierce Middle School and the high school, and they spoke about after-school time, not everyone's in sports, you know, and so, some, uh, having a place to get a snack if they're going to go back for some other, let's say, the music lesson or some other activity. Some of them are just having a little bit of time, you know, between when they get out of school and when they're starting their next activity, and having a place to grab a bite to eat was something that was mentioned as being desirable. So, it, it might take a little bit of the use that the library gets in that after-school age group, but you, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, Will, the kind of need that exists for that?
I definitely say there's a need, uh, there's probably a bigger need for the youth now that we've replaced our old vending machines, which had soda and cheese, it's in candy, with more healthy options, but...
I noticed that.
You know, that's, uh, that's, that's just something different. But no, I, I do think that, um, a café or a, any sort of food location would be popular.
Got Chick-fil-A.
You'd have, we'd have parking and traffic issues then. But, uh, I, I think it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't increase necessarily or decrease the use of the library. I think people would, it would become part of the tour that they do, uh, you know, as they already walk down to the end of Reed's Dale and, and get food there, it'll just make a, a little bit more convenient and close. But I think it's good, it keeps the kids in this town center, so they could either be using the Wildcat Den, the, the library, or have another option to, to meet, too, because food's a big deal for them, so.
Other comments, Mr. Zull?
So, just looking at the material that Mr. Milano sent us in advance, um, the, the total for the option three was actually different than what was on your PowerPoint. Um, the total construction cost for the café with the commercial was 12.7. And then, on the slideshow, it had, had the exact same cost, which I was wondering about.
I think it was including the build-out. So, if you look down and it says alternate number two option...
Oh, is the build-out, that's the...
Is the build-out of the space, so, otherwise, it's just corn shell. So, again, if you had somebody, if you leased it, you know, to somebody else, then they could do the build-out.
They could do the build-outs, that's four, almost 4.7 million.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering how, it was exactly the same cost.
Ms. Masters?
The other thing that we had talked about, I think, was to get another, like, once the fire station was up and running, to sort of get another look at the parking that's existing. There was also some talk about, um, when you're exiting town hall, where people are parking illegally a couple of spots along there, is there a way to, I wanted to talk with, um, the DBW director about that, because it is one-way traffic, um, going out, um, when you're leaving town hall, and cars are parking along that, um, area, and the fire truck is able to get by, but obviously, we'd want it a little bit wider, and maybe you just have to move the curb a little, I don't know, um, and get a few more spots, especially where we're talking about a crosswalk being put in, you, that would help, you know, with the crosswalk. And then, um, I think several of the meetings, I know we had talked about the churches, and you had mentioned it here, but it might be, in the meantime, worthwhile, you know, revisiting that, um, just even if you can get some spots temporarily while all this is being worked out, because obviously, the need is still there, you know?
Right. I, I think, um, we had had, I think earlier I mentioned, Roxanne, we would, we should and would want to do additional analysis around town hall after the fire station's complete, and we would need to understand from the fire chief how much is required by code or otherwise to keep clear. Um, I mean, um, my understanding is that if, if we did add parking, it would probably have to go into the green space a little bit. Yeah. But that's certainly something that if we continued, we, we could take, continue to look at. We have talked about interim solution, and, you know, crossing, uh, Cantinav is not ideal for the populations that they've concerned about, but in interim, it, it would take a long time to get a project like this done, so in the interim, if there's some additional spaces that could be found at town hall, um, then that could help in the short term.
Other comments or questions? Does it make sense to, to cost out, uh, the possibility of the parking and parking in just the café area, rather than the café and residential and café and, and municipal? And, and the second part of that is, would that defeat the purpose of parking for the library? So, I guess, I guess those are two questions, thoughts?
I think we'd be open to looking at that option, just the café and the parking, and see what kind of revenue can be generated from the lease of a café, and, and kind of really hone in on how much space that would, how big that would need to be. Maybe it could be two-story if it needed to be a little bit bigger, so it doesn't cut into the parking. And then, also, just this idea of this public-private partnership, I think it's, so, the, the lease option, so the rental income from that, if the town wants to be a landlord, and then the other would be whether there's some other kind of public-private with a little bigger development, and we could come back with a couple, with those options for you with a little more information, um, provided that the MPIC is funded during the May town meeting, we'll have some resources to do it.
Presumably, the cost would be, cost would be somewhere between the 17.4 and the 5.
Well, I mean, if you, if you look at the cost per square foot, if you said that, um, I think it was a 2,000-square-foot café, and the costs, um, we're looking at build-out of 570 a square foot, call it six, you know, so, you know, the cost for that café is not going to be any order of magnitude very much compared to the rest of the, of the structure.
Other comments?
I'm good.
So, so do you have what you need to proceed, or, or do we, do you need more?
We're just really looking for your support to continue. Uh, this is, you know, town-owned land, it's not library control, you know, it, you know, we can't commit the town to do anything, so we're, we just didn't want to continue on this path without getting some sense that there's support, uh, from the select board to, to do that.
I mean, they've given us some, I'm, they've given us some options. I mean, this, there's definitely, to me, there's some flexibility to here, you mean, to, to create an, to create an improvement, a needed improvement. The question is how we do it in the most expedited manner that's of least hardship to the tax, you know, taxing a lot. I like anything with partnerships, so, I'm fine.
I don't think we need a motion.
No, it's not, yeah, it's not, I don't think we need a motion.
I think we just need to make sure that there's, there's no, there's no sense here to discourage proceeding. Is there anyone that, any board member that thinks we should discourage proceeding here? I don't, I don't think we have. It seems like there's support for proceeding and, and looking into it further, and, you know, developing, um, a little more current data, and perhaps another option, and seeing how that works in with the, with the needs. Is that fair?
Great, thank you. Great, thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate it.
All right. Item, go back to item six. This is the Milton Landing. We have item 6A and item C. Is this Mr. Wells or Mr. Milano, or?
He can stop.
Mr. Milano, is it, we go right to item 6A?
Sure.
Dexter Southfield?
Um, yes, so Dexter Southfield has been working on a proposed dock design, a low-profile dock at Milton Landing that would be approximately adjacent to the small boat ramp referred to as Captain's Landing. It would enable them to have access for their shells and for their crafts that they use during rowing, but would also provide public access for canoeers, kayakers, paddleboarders, other water-dependent uses, which has been a goal to try to get for the town to have a low-profile dock. And here, Dexter is proposing to install one during the, you know, beginning March period through the boating season until the fall. They would, uh, install it and remove it at their expense, um, and are looking for some approvals from the town to move forward. Minimal impact in terms of the seawall and other structures down there. They'll, um, tie it off to cement blocks that they'll bring in. They will have some small stays that are connected to the seawall, but should have minimal impact there. They've engaged in discussions both with Nippon's Rowing Club, as well as the Milton Yacht Club, to solicit their feedback on both the location and the type of dock, um, and all commentary has been productive and, and positive so far. So, just looking to, um, move this ahead, if the boards intend to do so.
Comments or questions?
And I should add, just sorry, uh, they are excited to get in, they want to get in for this boating season, so their goal would to be have this in in the next couple of weeks, and to have their season start accordingly by the end of the month.
Comments or questions?
I'm ready to make a, for the purposes, I'm ready to make a, a motion to approve with one character, subject to, so we have a landing meeting on Thursday, and we'll bring all the party, we'll bring in everyone, including Terry Driscoll, who was really the one who was representing Milton Crew during all the MAPC work back in 2015 with the NPIC, um, just to make sure that we tweak it, to make it, but I, I don't see us having any voting changes to it. I think we're, we're fine the way, the way it is. The design that we're, with tonight is very similar to one of the three designs that was presented, or designed, created by the MAPC back in 2016, so.
So, do we want to make the motion to approve the design subject to Milton Landing committees?
Any edits, any, you know, minor tweaks.
Approval, okay.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further, oh, Ms. Bradley.
So, before the motion was made, I have my hand up. I have some questions that I think can fall under the discussion.
Yep, sorry, I, sorry, I missed your hand, Ms. Bradley. Do you, do you want to make it in the discussion?
Um, if that's okay with you, I'll do it during the discussion. It's fine.
Motion's been made and seconded, um, and now we're in discussion. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, have we spoken to the Milton High Crew about the impact of having Dexter Southfield there?
Yes.
And their response has been?
Very good. This is, the dock is a benefit to them at, at what it would have been a $35,000 to $50,000 cost from us.
So, they're going to be able to use the Dexter Southfield?
Yes, as, as is the public.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, that that was fine, and that they were... Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, that that was fine and that they were in the loop for all of this, because I wouldn't want to upset that apple cart as well. That's it, that was my questions. I just didn't know where the, where the Milton, where the high school kids were landing, so, thanks for that.
Other comments or questions? Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musta?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zull?
Yes.
Mr. Zull is yes. Item 6B is a request for proposals for lot, at lot A, Mr. Milano.
Sure, I don't have, I have not prepared a RFP, but I think in our previous discussions, in terms of engaging with the commitment to the yacht club long-term, I think that is, will have to be a next step. We'll have to discuss the landing committee first, would probably be, and then bring it back to the next.
I'm fine with that, because I had one question, Ms. Bradley. And just, the agreement that we made, that the, on lot A, that the yacht club, what was the timeline on that?
Are you asking me?
Because it was the three of us, I just remember what it was.
Oh, shoot. I feel like when we did that, it was like for nine months, Richard, I mean, Mr. Wells.
So I want to look at that, whatever we agreed to.
And I think that the reason why was that we needed it to be month-to-month. And I believe that we did a nine-month agreement at that time, but that was, gosh, when was that?
Yeah, they're supposed to be off of lot B by the end of June. At which time Dexter would move in, and then we would work with the yacht club moving forward for winter storage on lot A.
Lot A.
Yeah. That sounds right, Nick, I mean, Mr. Milano. Sorry, guys, I've been really sick.
Nick works, thank you.
That sounds absolutely right, Mr. Milano.
All right, so do we want to move, or do we want to?
Defer for now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, yeah, I'm in no rush on this. I'm okay with that, thank you.
So defer on item 6B. Item eight, discussion update approval FY 2025 budget recommendation. Is this Ms. Bradley, Mr. Milano, or a combination of the two?
I'm going to nicely punt this over to Mr. Milano, because we did have a meeting just, we had a meeting last Tuesday, Wednesday, because I was sick. So Wednesday morning at 8:00, we had a meeting and we approved the budget, but I will, we approved a recommendation for the budget to the Select Board, but I will let Nick be the one to actually spell this all out for you guys, since he's there in person.
Thank you, yes. So we met as the Finance Committee last week, as Ms. Bradley indicated. Spoke about the budget recommendation I had made at our Slack, our previous Select Board meeting. That remains the recommendation. I can answer any questions that more board members might have or speak to it more directly. But at this time, what the Finance Committee has recommended is the budget as proposed at our February 27th meeting.
Comments or questions on the budget as proposed?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Bradley?
Just so folks are reminded again, this will include the $1 increase on the trash fees, which has not been raised since 2006. I just wanted to bring that back to everyone's attention, so that we're all aware of it.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley, and that's, that'll be our next item, it's actually item 8A, so that'll be our next item.
Oh, look at me go.
Do you want to do them A, B, C, do you want to, how do you want to do it, Nick?
I think we would probably take them in order. So first, first we'd have a motion to approve the, the recommendation of the Finance Committee on the budget, and then we could go to the trash fee after that.
So I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Finance Committee for FY 25, bucket budget recommendations.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musta?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zull?
Yes.
Mr. Zull is yes. All right, item 8B, 8A, sorry. The trash cart sticker fee $1 increase. Mr. Milano, do you want to tee this up as well?
Sure. As we spoke about in our prior meeting, the trash fee has been $3 a week if you get the cart billed once annually, or $3 per sticker. The budget includes a revenue increase associated with a dollar increase to that cost. And that is the recommendation at this time. We would continue to use the stickers that we're using now, transition to a $4 fee after July 1st if the board so votes. The annual bill that folks get would be a dollar a week additional per cart, so that would be a total of $208 a week, $208 for the year, excuse me. Not going to cause any confusion, for a cart. And the commensurate increase, the $3 sticker would be a $4 sticker at the point of sale.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just two quick things on this, Mr. Milano. The senior citizens discount for the trash barrels still in effect?
Yes, there is a, so right now, seniors pay $94 for the year, which equates to a 60% cost compared to the full amount, and that would be the case here. So it would be $125 in moving forward after July 1st, rather than the $94 it is currently.
Thanks, and one more, Mr. Milano. This still wouldn't cover entirely the cost of trash, trash collection, is that correct?
That's correct. We're slightly below, even with this estimated increase, we would be slightly below our cost to collect and dispose of our trash. In fiscal '24, our current year, we estimated about $1.2 million in revenue, and the costs were about $1.7 million. So this would close that gap, but it would still be supported by the taxpayers to the tune of about $200,000 a year. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
I make a motion, I make a motion to approve the trash cart sticker fee increase, $1 increase for 2025.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musta?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zull?
Yes.
And Mrs. Zull is yes. Item 8B, FY 2025 capital budget recommendation. Is this Mr. Wells?
Go ahead, Mr. Milano, he's got it.
Sure, I'll just share two slides quickly to explain the capital budget. So our fiscal '25 capital budget, as our budgets typically do, include funding some projects out of free cash, one-time money, and a number of other projects by borrowing, which will be paid back over various useful life terms. For free cash, we are, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee recommended $955,000 in expenditures of various projects listed in front of you. Three smaller projects for facilities at the schools, a project to continue the work that Mr. Walsh and Chief Madden spoke about earlier on the Fire Headquarters Building, the second and third floor reuse plan and what that building should be used as moving forward. The first floor will be a meeting space, training room. There is an open question as to what the second and third floor will be, and it's starting to take shape. The walls have come down, the windows are gone, everything's been abated. If you haven't been by Town Hall, the slate roof is going up. The exterior work is well underway. Project is going, but we're work, looking forward to visioning and some design work on the interior of the second and third floor next year. Turnout gear for firefighters to continue with their replacement of their firefighting gear. A small piece of equipment for the parks, which is used constantly throughout the season. And then school technology, half a million dollars, which would go to both their end-user devices, such as Chromebooks, and then also some network hardware improvements at schools for wireless access points and other internet infrastructure. And lastly, town technology for infrastructure upgrades, as well as continuing various projects to improve some of our capital equipment for technology. So that amounts to $955,000 out of free cash. And then for borrowing, a number of smaller projects, as well as two large ones. So I'll just go and order some vehicles' equipment replacements for both the cemetery and DPW to continue reshaping those fleets and making sure we stay up to date on the fleet that we have. Roadway construction of a million dollars, this is the number we target annually. You know, I think we're all aware of the, the need to put money back into our roads, and we're continuing to do that with a million-dollar investment there. Traffic calming projects with the Governor's Road project underway. We're looking forward to continuing to take on projects of a similar idea around town to improve traffic calming on streets, so $100,000 appropriation. Again, additional facilities projects at the schools. And the big one on the, on the non-roadside is the buildout of the attic at Cunningham, which is a $2 million request from the School Committee. Some work here at the Council on Aging on exterior, building improvements, improvements to the Guile Road field, the middle Guile field for parks. And lastly, various improvements at the Milton Police Department, pretty much in the, in the lockup for improvements there that are required to continue through the accreditation process. Totalling about $4 million, largely driven by the $2 million for Cunningham and the million dollars for roadway construction.
Comments or questions?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve as presented by Mr. Milano, and I'd just like to extend my thanks to Nick, especially to Amy Dexter, our accountant, who, the two of them worked very hard on this, as well as all the committee, the EB Department, schools, Lizzie, John Focorelli. I know, I know I'll miss someone. Laurie from the, from the Water Committee. Laurie, there's just so many people, Michael Hale, I just, I'll forget one of them. And I also want to thank Chris Hayden, who was only with us for a short time, and will be replaced by Tom McCarthy, who was leaving. They show up every meeting, 7:00 AM, as requested. And it's not an easy thing, as, as anyone who's attended, and we see in our own, just the general budget requests every year, that, you know, to support and protect and replace the infrastructure that is, the community as a whole, is very, very hard. And so I thank them all for their time, and especially Nick and Amy, who do the yeoman's work of getting this done, so, thank you.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Lynn, that was, the motion stopped.
I know, it did.
After the first sentence, I think.
It did, because I had it in my head, and I didn't want to forget it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musta?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, and I apologize, we're right, forgot.
Mr. Zull?
Yes.
And Mrs. Zull is yes. All right, item 8C is the FY 2025 state budget, budget requests. I forwarded to each of you the email that we received from Senator Timolty asking for this board's view of what he should advocate for in the 2025 budget at the Senate level. He requested to have the items sent to him by this Friday, the 15th. So if we have areas that we want Senator Timolty to advocate for, we should, we should, we should push for them, so. Comments or questions? Mr. Wells?
The only thing that I'm thinking of is, we're still holding that $100,000 that was, does test, came from Rep. Driscoll, but they both signed off on for erecting a, I don't want to say a gazebo, there's a name for it, I forgot.
Pergola.
Pergola, and we now know that that's a three, quarter, three quarters of a million-dollar project if we're to construct it. So Mr. Milano and I had had some discussions with Rep. Driscoll and some of their staffs about potentially purchasing, actually, the CPA committee, this, right, this came to CPA. Purposing it, and I think the cost was like 150. It might be prudent, Representative Driscoll still holding that 100. Maybe if we ask for another 50, because that would allow us to do it and install it on the deck seasonally, a portable stage.
Oh, a stage.
It would, it could go in and go out seasonally. That would, we would be able to do that without any costs to the taxpayers. And 50 would more than cover it. Am I right, am I right, yeah, 50? I think we were 130, 135.
Yeah, I think the CPA request was in that ballpark.
So we would say 150 for a portable stage?
50, yeah, we, no, we need is 50, we already have, we already have 100 in the bank, yeah, yeah, 150 total, yeah.
Yeah, you'd have to repurpose the 100, right, or could you, would you have to?
So Rep. Driscoll's already.
Would be, but.
I'm sorry?
The indications were that that $100,000 would still be available, but we would want to chase that down, just to make sure that.
He did a little bit of homework on us being able to repurpose it, and he felt that it could be, that it met the criteria of the.
So maybe we'll say 150, and then, in parentheses, we'll say we think 100,000 has already been allocated.
Good idea, just a thought.
Other, other areas for seeking funds from the state budget requests in the Senate? Mr. Wells?
Do we get, because they mentioned the side, the crosswalk going, and I saw a post today, even though it's not Town DPW, it's DCR property. The yellow flashing lights, I thought Chase gets some of those on statement. You don't refer to the ones that, we don't have them on every crosswalk, we have them. I'm not sure exactly what the cost is per, but maybe them being able to fund a few a year would, would, and I'm really thinking off the top of my head.
Well, how about, how about a general, just to add, how about a general request to the DPW?
Yeah, that's fine.
Offer the DPW to, to.
Play it.
To, to lay out what, or to list those things that they, they could have, whether it be in traffic calming, or whether it be on, you know, road, road safety, particularly with respect to Chikatobet and some of the other areas in town. So maybe if we find, find out from the DPW what, what they could do, we could include that in the request. Ms. Musta?
Two other things, I would say that a DPW-related. The, for the MPIC committee, there were a bunch of residents that came forward that live near the fire station. They were talking about the pathway that you heard about today. They were talking about curbing that would make it safer for people to walk from the senior center on the street. So they had, they had a request at some point. Chase Berkeley may know about this, had to do with curbing, it's probably like 300 feet or maybe 50, something in that vicinity. So that might be something to, you know, see if, if they can put through there, because that, they've asked for that a while ago. And I know another thing is over by the corner of Adams and, I think it's Brook, where that intersects, there's, like, if you're coming from the square and walking on the sidewalk to take a left onto, like, right near St. Agath's.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so right on that corner, there's a big utility box there, right near that crosswalk. And a couple of residents have actually come forward to me, asking me if there's anything that could be done. And I'm wondering if that utility box can be moved, and that would cost some money, but to relocate it a little bit and make it a little safer for people with children that need to go around the corner to get into the crosswalk, because if you're coming down Brook to take a right in front of St. Agath's, you might not catch somebody till it's a little too late. So that might be something. So I think DPW-related, they may have other things, but maybe we should check in with DPW.
DPW and traffic? What about, and we could ask DPW this, but it probably makes sense to get a sense of this. But what about, there's been discussion over the years about lights in front of the Verizon Building?
Oh, that was a done deal about 15, 15, 20 years ago? That was a, and the residents protested so hard that they pulled the money back.
Yeah, so it may not be, if, that may be more controversial.
It's prudent to have the discussion with them, see what he says.
Well, I don't know if we should have, we should, this is really requested. So I think, I think that if that's something that we should explore again, then that's, that's. I know the Traffic Mitigation Committee some years ago recommended it, you know, for safety. That, well, that was before, that deal, that was before, it was recommended by Traffic Mitigation, you know, this was probably four, or three or four years ago, but, but yeah, so I don't, I don't know. It doesn't sound like it's something that we should pursue now, because if the residents, the residents will need to be heard, heard again on that.
Yeah, before we did it on our own, that would be prudent.
Yeah, okay. Anything else, any other thoughts? One other thing, you know, is we may look into school-related issues and perhaps reach out to the superintendent.
Sure.
And see if there are school-related items that we could, we could pursue. Whether it relates to building, whether it relates to the temporary space at Cunningham. To the extent that we can get help on, on school-related items, that would certainly help the budget, so. So I have, I have the DPW-related items, the flashing lights, the curbing for the COA area, the, the utility box, the crosswalk up near St. Agath's, school-related items, and the, the, the stage, the portable stage money. Any other thoughts about, you can always email, my, my intention is to send a response. He said the 15th, so that's, that's Friday, so.
I have one.
What's that?
I have one.
Yeah.
So this is going to be done shortly, all of this.
This meaning?
The station, the whole.
Oh, the fire station, yeah, yeah.
The basketball court.
Well, we have $40,000 from, for, for CPA, actually, because that was.
Is that redoing?
That was raised by, that was raised by, by someone else with the same last name as me in front of the CPC Committee this summer. But, so that's $40,000, and then I think they wanted to, I think they wanted to do an initial upgrade and then, and then see how it fits into the existing, the existing.
I didn't know if that could approve or not, so I'm, that's fine, I just. I didn't know if that could be approved or not, so I hope that's fine, I just had that in my head.
Yeah, it's approved from the CPC, but it'll go to town meeting. Actually, it's in our packet today for our CPC article. Mr. Zoll?
So one idea, the Youth Task Force has been talking about it, and it was alluded to earlier when we were talking about the old fire station, use of the second floor for like a teen center. Be really great to get some state money, to provide a safe space for kids to hang out.
So I don't know that...
I know we haven't made all the decisions yet.
Yeah, but generally, we could probably say, you know, for the use of, generally the use of, the, our historic remaining fire station, so without putting a purpose on it, that seems to be...
So one of the reasons that I brought up the basketball court is I met with Park and Rec today and talked, and one of the things they said was regarding to a teen center, is anything that we, they said if they had one thing you could do in it, you'd have to be big enough to be able to play indoor basketball, even just, they said it's the biggest thing that they want over there that they can't do, they kind of...
Over at the church, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, and that actually made me think, you know, maybe one day if we redo that court, we could actually enclose it.
Over here.
Where am I? No, over here.
Over here, yeah.
Over here.
Turn around, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm right, yeah, and make it, you know, make it four-seasonal versus, you know, three-seasonal.
Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Speaking of basketball, as Mr. Milano knows, I've been talking about trying to get a basketball court at the end of Lincoln Street now for two years since I've been on the Select Board. I'm really hoping that we can bring back basketball to this part of Kelly Field, was taken away years ago, I'm sure Mr. Wells could tell you the exact date, and to utilize the school parking lot that's there, the overflow parking lot, there's plenty of space for the teachers to park and for us to put in a basketball court over there. So I'd like for that to remain on folks' mind, especially Mr. Milano's mind, as we start to do CPC grant proposals for the next round. I think basketball is a huge thing for kids, as Mr. Wells just said, so I would really hope that we could also get the support of the Select Board behind this effort.
So Ms. Bradley, do we want to include this as a fifth item for our state budget request, a Lincoln Street basketball court?
Well, unfortunately, Mr. Chair, we don't own the land that it's on, the school does, which I'm confused about, but maybe Mr. Milano can shed some light on that. If we want to put it in, that would be excellent, I would really appreciate it, as would all the kids over here on this side of town. But I would defer to Mr. Milano about whether or not we could even start to do anything there, because I do believe it's school-owned property.
Mr. Milano?
We could certainly engage with the schools on it, but it might be more suited to that conversation as it goes forward with CPC than this immediate request here.
Than this request, okay, all right, all right. So maybe the idea, Ms. Bradley, is that Mr. Milano will connect with our superintendent to see if that's a possible use for that land, and then maybe we'll see if we can get CPC money for that. Does that sound like a way forward?
Yep, that sounds excellent, I just wanted to keep it at the forefront of folks' minds.
All right, so we won't include that for this request. All right, so now I have four. I've got the portable stage, the DPW, and traffic, school-related, and then the old fire station, use of the second floor. Anything else that we want to, and again, we have a couple of days, so if you think of something, we can send it in.
I think for the fire station, you don't have to even say second floor specifically.
Right, that's right. Yes, yes.
For community purposes.
Yes.
I have one.
Okay, hold on, let me just, let me write down refurbish, because I missed that word. Mr. Wells?
The library has been desperately seeking a generator for their building, and we've been unable, and I know it's a, but that would definitely, and Senator Timmeltie possibly could even tap into some MEMA money or some other money from another source, that could maybe, even if we could get partial towards it, then we try to make up, but that was John Focorelli, that's the biggest thing he spoke to on Capitol this year, we just couldn't find the money to fund it. Thank you.
That's number five. Anything else? And again, we can, you can just send me anything you have before, I'll probably send it in by midday on Friday, so. All right. Item 8D, which is the, I'm sorry, where is it? Oh, there it is, Sustainable Budget Working Group, which, when I first read it, I thought about sustainability, I didn't know what, but now I understand what it was. Mr. Milano, why don't you give us an update on that?
This was mentioned at our previous meeting regarding, during Mr. Fundling's public comments about setting up a committee to work on a sustainable budget. My thought is, I thought about the request and thinking about the upcoming year when we're thinking about both a school project and the impact to taxpayers for that, as well as potential operating override in fiscal '26 and future budget years generally, that perhaps as a kind of a middle road on that would be to set up an internal working group focused on long-term planning around the budget, focused on some of these immediate impacts that are coming up in fiscal '26 that we've been, in fiscal '25 and '26 that we've been talking about, and report back to our elected bodies and to the Warren Committee, and to establish a schedule by which we would do so, to start firming up some of this long-term planning ahead of what we expect to be a challenging fiscal '26 budget season, and also to provide an output for feedback on potential impacts and taxpayer impacts of a potential school project. So that's my thought, I just want to kind of take some of what he was mentioning and formalize it, keep it an internal to a degree, but also having it report to these public bodies at some defined timelines, and I can prepare a schedule for this board's approval, if that sounds like a sensical way forward.
Comments or questions from the members? Mr. Zoll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Milano, are you, would you assume the participation of other elected bodies? I'm thinking specifically of the Planning Board. This, I think a sustainable budget working group ultimately needs to be thinking about where the tax base of the town is, and I think it's super important for the Planning Board to participate in a group like that, given how overly reliant we are on individual taxpayer, you know, property owners, single-family homes. I think it's, a sustainable budget working group without the Planning Board's participation would be, I think, not worth carrying out.
No, I think that's a good thought, it wasn't on the list of what I was thinking, but I, we would be happy, or I would be happy to have that, have this group report to them as well, and solicit their feedback and present them some of the realities of what drives our revenues.
Ms. Musto?
Thank you. Mr. Milano, could you talk a little bit about the makeup of the committee, and with regards to the planning, would you report to them as well? Is that correct?
Yeah, my view is keep it as an internal staff-based working group with myself, the finance team that I have in Town Hall, as well as the school and their finance team, and then have planned and scheduled check-ins and meetings with the groups to report out, to work towards, you know, having all of our bodies here in town on the same page when it comes to where our budget sits and what our forecasts look like.
So it sounds like this is a working group rather than a committee?
Sounds good.
Yeah, so is the motion that you're looking for, Mr. Milano, maybe a motion to authorize the town administrator to engage a sustainable working budget group, or if you even need?
I don't think we need.
No, I would agree, I don't think I need one, but I would, I'll bring back a planned calendar, and maybe that would be what the board signs off on, as we plan for fiscal '26 and future years.
Great. Mr. Zoll?
I also think it would be good to have some community forums for that group as well, so reporting back to the bodies, and also having a community session, it wouldn't have to be every month or something, but maybe a couple times a year.
Sure.
Item nine, Discussion Update Approval, May 6, 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Item 9A is, would be a motion to reopen the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll move to reopen that warrant, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Item 9B, Town Meeting Dates, this is really more for, I don't know that we need a motion on this, this is really more for informational purposes?
Yes, and just to flag it, we are double-booked on what is typically the third night of town meeting, which is usually, has been a Thursday, which would have been May 9th, but please draw your attention to the fact that we would meet May 6th, May 7th, May 8th, so it'd be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I think we can all hope for maybe a three-night town meeting. If not, see you back, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the next week. But that, I just wanted to get that out there informationally, to plan for attendance on Wednesday, not Thursday, has been the past practice, the high school is hosting National Honor Society, I think, that night, so displaced for a good reason.
No major issues for this, may fly through it. Item 9C, I believe Ms. Musto wants to recuse herself, so she's going to step out for this. This is the warrant article update on the Community Preservation Committee project recommendations for the warrant.
The change that has been, since the warrant articles were submitted, the Community Preservation Committee added a project, the Beverly Park Playground, in an appropriation of, recommended appropriation of $75,000. Otherwise, the projects as recommended have been the list that they've been working on for several months now. Happy to provide a rundown of those, or just, I just wanted to flag the one change for the warrant article, being the addition of...
I think we had it in the package, without the $75,000, so.
So you want to motion, Mr.?
Yeah, I think, just to approve that, to approve those recommendations with the additional $75,000 for inclusion on the warrant.
So I'll make that motion with the additional, with the initial recommendation, with the addition of the $75,000 to be included on the warrant for Beverly Park. I'll second it, okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. All right, Ms. Musto can come back.
I'll just...
Oh, there she is. She is. Item 9D is the warrant article update on the Milton Village Historic District, Historic District and Local Historic District Bylaw. This is a renewal of something that we had for the prior town meeting. Mr. Milano, do you want to tee this one up?
Sure, the Local Historic District Study Committee has continued to work on their proposed bylaw. They have brought forward a revised version of what was presented, or included in the warrant, rather, in December, and would like this to be the warrant article that is considered. They have begun meeting with the warrant committee, they met with the warrant committee last night on this revised version of the article, so I think for all intents and purposes for the warrant, it would make more sense to include this revision than what had gone in December.
Comments or questions from the members? Seeing none, is there a motion to include this?
I'll move to approve the revised Milton Village Historic District and Local Historic District Bylaw for inclusion in the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and any further discussion? All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Item 9E...
Mr. Chair, I'm just going to help Mr. Guy, I'm going to make a warrant to prove the potential warrant article for the Master Plan Implementation Committee extension. Is a timeline on it?
It's an extension for a year.
For one year.
Because they are due to expire, I think in the fall, so this would be an extension for a year.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Musto?
Yes, thank you. I had sent a note to Cheryl, I don't know if she has, saw this, but it says 11 years, but when you go halfway down under the number B, anticipated steps to be accomplished within the next two years, I believe it should say one year.
Yes, you're right, I'm sorry, she had corrected that, and I never distributed it, so she did follow up to make that correction.
Okay. Do you have that, Mike?
And to tie it all up.
I don't, I mean, why don't we, why don't we approve it with that amendment?
I'm with you, I'd say...
With that amendment. So that's a friendly amendment for Ms. Musto, do you accept the friendly amendment?
I accept that, yeah.
And accepted, the second accepts it as well. Thank you, Ms. Musto, for the catch.
Thank you.
Still got a vote on it, all right?
Yes, any further discussion? All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, hold on, just one second.
I'm taken back, nope.
Hold on one second, Ms. Musto?
Just a quick question. I don't know, does your copy, Mr. Milano, at the bottom of that second page, where it says that it will exist for, is that corrected to 11 years?
11 years, yeah.
Okay, so it's corrected in that whole paragraph?
Correct.
Okay, so, because mine does not have that, and that was way before that one, so...
No, thank you.
So that has to be also, I guess, a friendly amendment from what we saw?
Fine, accepted.
Okay, it's like twice in there.
The second?
Twice in there, okay, thank you.
Great. All right. Motion's been made, seconded, and amended. All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Thank you for the corrections, Ms. Musto. And then we are on item 9F.
I'll move to close the warrant.
Second.
Which is been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Item 10, this is Discussion Approval, MBTA Communities Act and Status and Issues. I'm going to defer, I'm going to ask to defer, I was, had taken the labor on letters regarding state funding, but I think it's better to defer that, given the fact that we may be hiring counsel, and so we would probably want to get some feedback on that, so I'm going to, I'm going to ask to defer that. Is anything else on item 10 that anyone has? All right, seeing none. At this time, I believe we have our presenters for the Governor Stoughton matters, which include the Milton Residence Fund, the Milton Community Food Pantry, and Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital, so out of deference to their schedules, what I would ask is to have a motion to recess...
I'll make a motion to recess from the Select Board meeting to enter into a meeting of the trustees of Governor Stoughton Trust, and I may have given you more than you need.
No, it's fine.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. All right, now I will call to order a meeting of the Governor Stoughton trustees. Item 2 is Request for Funding from the Governor Stoughton Trustees. Before we get to the requests from the three entities here, maybe Mr. Milano, if you could tell us what we have available to distribute, that would help.
Sure. So I spoke with the Town Treasurer, who reported, typically look at this based on quarterly closing deadlines, so as of the end of December 2023, the trust had 5.6 to $8 million in it, of which we look at the $5,350,000 received from Polte as non-expendable, leaving the trust approximately $273,000 of expendable funds.
All right, so the current expendable funds are $273,000. All right, so now we have three entities requesting, and so why don't we go in or? And just a thought for the members, we may want to, given the fact that we have a limit on the amount, we may want to hear from all of the presenters before we make the motions. In other words, oh, I understand, Ms. Musto, you'll be recused on the third one, Beth Israel Deaconess, but in other words, what I'm suggesting is rather than appropriate a certain amount to Milton Residence Funds, we may want to wait until we know what the full aggregated amount is, so we don't go over the...
So we don't know right now, I'm, all right, great.
Well, there was some sense in the paperwork, but I think we want to get a sense.
That makes sense to me.
Okay, all right.
All right, who's here?
So first, we have the Milton Residence Fund. I think Noreen Dolan is here. So if we could promote Ms. Dolan. Hi, Noreen.
Here, hello. Thank you all for pausing the Select Board meeting and listening to our request. So just to get everyone reminded of, you know, the history, so in 2023, in January 6 of 2023, the Governor Stoughton Trust and yourselves were able to provide a grant of $120,000 that lasted about 11 months in the Milton Residence Fund. And I came back to you all in November stating that we were out of Governor Stoughton Funds, out of other donations, and needed a small grant to make it through the remainder of the year and the start of the really cold season. So an additional grant was made of $40,000. So in total, that was $160,000 for the last 15 months to get us through with requests. So right now, we've spent out all of those, Governor Stoughton Trust, we've spent out other donations. We tend to get $20,000 annually from the Copeland Family Foundation, of which we're really grateful for. And we get, I was looking back, about $75,000 in community members and organizations in the community donating. And at this point, we're extremely low on funds. So I wanted to provide an update in terms of looking at the distribution, just so I view a sense of the town. I still get a lot of requests, like, really, Milton has low-income families? Like, really, there's families in need? You know, I'm saying, yes, absolutely, there are. And I think my other presenters following me will, will be able to, you know, speak to that as well. It really is people on fixed income, seniors, I have a lot of families, you know, working families, people with significant medical challenges, things that are really preventing higher income, and all very valid requests. So I know we've talked in the past about, you know, are there some requests you can deny? And I can, but I mean, it really, pretty much 95% of the requests are really valid, like, a family or an elder has no oil heat, has no heat or hot water going on, their electricity's been shut off. People come to me saying, my electricity's been shut off for two months, we finally can't take it anymore, can you help us turn it back on? And I'm like, of course, you should have called me two months ago. So, you know, I keep stating that no one in this town should go with no heat through the winter, with no electricity, things like that. So really, there's a lot of bigger needs we could hit, but really even just the basics, keeping the lights and the heat on and keeping people housed, are taking up the majority of the donations. So I don't want to talk too long. So in just looking back to give you an understanding, I looked back at the last four months of spending. $19,172 was distributed in November, $18,631 was distributed in December, plus all the holiday toys and winter coats and boots and all the things that we were, you know, trying to do additionally, and then with my brother's keeper with the holiday gifts. There was a really large spike in January, $33,000 was distributed. It was a lot of, the really cold was coming on and a lot, a lot of panic in terms of getting oil in the tanks, getting heating systems operational. Maybe people fell behind because of like a small car repair, and you need reliable transportation to make it to medical appointments and work. So there was a spike in January, but then it did dip down to below $10,000 in February because, you know, like maybe people got the heat, got the stabilization in, in January, and then it's going to come back in March. So looking, I'd say an average of $19,000 to $20,000 is distributed, and it looks like we'll need about $132,000 of whatever external sources to get us through the remainder of 2024 at the current pace. I know the park and rec is, just mentioned that next week, the park and rec camp is going to have their flyer come out. And I know in past years, we've talked about, we've assisted about 18 low-income children with single working parents or elders, taking care of them, that they would get assistance through the Governor Stoughton Trust to be able to go to camp. So looking at those kind of needs. So we do get some assistance from outside funds, but like I mentioned, the very generous Copeland Family Foundation that gave me $20,000 for the year, that has all been spent. And so we are wanting to make a request at this time to the Governor Stoughton Trust for, you know, whatever funds you'd be willing to consider. You know, yeah, I'm not sure the number is, you know, in terms of like, we need 130, but I know that might not be, that you might not have enough funds, depending on the other needs that are out there, so.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dolan. Comments or questions for Ms. Dolan?
I just want to, I just want to say thank you. She knows that this is something I support strongly. I've had her prior, both Diane Ferrari and Sherri Dolan, who, who watch over her daily in her role there, as well as my role at my brother's keeper. I'm very humbled to be part of that, and I know how much that contributes. One day this year, one of the places that I don't deliver is in this town. And when I was doing my, one of my delivery days, as we were getting towards Christmas, one day in my delivery route box, they had put 14 Milton Residences in my box. And I took it out and I looked through it, and I said to myself, people think that the savvy, because of my many years working here, many of the names I knew, people don't think it exists, but as Noreen knows, it definitely exists. So thank you for, you're doing God's work, and thank you for taking care of those who truly need help in this community.
Thank you, yeah. And just thank you to all the Milton community who continues to donate, and I absolutely welcome any additional donations, because, you know, it's a responsibility of all of us, you know, Select Board included, but, you know, it shouldn't fall on any one particular funder. So definitely, we could use the resources, and the families out there could really use it. So thank you.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Musto?
Hi, I also wanted to thank Noreen for all of her good work for the residents and hard decisions that have to be made. And, you know, it's great that people feel comfortable coming to you for help. And just also wondering if you could provide some information for how people in the community could contribute, so that we have it on here, too, for people that watch this. I think that would be great.
Sure, that's a really good point. Yes, so we're still a little antiquated, because it's myself as a sole employee at First Parish, right near where you all are right now, right next to Town Hall. But absolutely, anyone in town can call the number, the 617-696-1214, and give a call. It's a voicemail system, but you can leave a voicemail, detailed voicemail, and I can return the message and get additional information. You can always email me at miltonresidefund@gmail.com, the M-I-L-T-O-N-R-E-S-I-D-E-N-T-S-fund@gmail.com, and to donate or to inquire about the fund. And in terms of electronic donations, if you were to reach out to me and say, you know, I'd love to make a donation of $100, I can send you a link through QuickBooks to make an easy electronic donation on that way. So, you know, we accept community, you know, checks, or reaching out to me and figuring out how to make an electronic donation. And any resident in town can, can reach out to me to just kind of brainstorm what their current situation is and how we may be able to help. And you'll hear from Pat next in terms of the Milton Community Food Pantry. You know, I work closely with them and make sure that anyone who calls me also knows about the other resources in town and that they can access, or fuel assistance out of QCAP in Quincy. So we're making sure that everybody knows of all the resources they can access.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions for Ms. Dolan? All right.
You want to motion?
Well, why don't we wait till end, because I think Ms. Dolan asked for, I think it was, you mentioned 132.
I have 132 with a star next to it here.
Well, but you mentioned 132, but it was 140 in the email, so.
So the original email that I sent to Mr. Milano was saying it looked like about 140. When I looked at the revision at the end of February to say how spending was, I wanted to update that to say, based on the lower spending that was in February, it equated to a lower monthly expenditure, which came to 130. So I never want to ask for more than I think we need at baseline. So, but of course, you know, yeah, any amount would, would be gratefully accepted.
That's great, Noreen, but things will look a little bit better this evening than they were earlier in the day, in terms of what we have in the, in the, in the trust. So the 140 is looking a little better to me than it was earlier today, so. All right, so why don't we go to item 2B, which is the Milton Community Food Pantry, and I think we have Pat Brolli with us.
She is there.
Pat?
Yes, I'm, I'm here, and I want to echo Noreen's, thank you to the Select Board for allowing us to take part earlier in the schedule for tonight's agenda. And I want to extend my sincere thanks for all of the support that the Select Board has provided for the food pantry in the past. We come tonight hat in hand, asking for about $62,500. As I outlined in our letter, that will allow us to continue to provide a gift card program, which is a way that our participants are able to go to the grocery stores and purchase the items that they prefer, given different cultural, ethnic preferences, and not just be, be given or selecting from the items that we obtained from the Greater Boston Food Bank. It broadens their ability and increases their pride as individuals, that they are able to purchase the food that they like and that their families like. That program will cost us about $48,000. We spend about $4,000 a month on the gift cards. We also, as you know, had to, had to stop our dairy program, so that also allows folks to pick up eggs, milk, butter, that kind of thing. We also would like to initiate a program with produce for our participants on a monthly basis. In the past, we were generously awarded donations of produce from Lambert's and the Maharis family. At this point in time, we are in a position where we need to purchase the food, the produce, the vegetables, the fruit. We would like to do that. The cost is approximately $1,000 a month, and so that's an additional $12,000 that we would be very happy to receive in this award. Lastly, and more mundanely, pedestrianally, unfortunately, grocery bags cost money, and we have had to purchase grocery bags for our participants to use. We will have to continue to do that and look for an opportunity for an award of $2,500 to allow us to do that. We're currently serving 165 families in Milton, and that equates to about 556 residents, who, because of their financial situations, maybe their health situation, they are not able to work, so that, or they may be working but not making enough money. They may have some benefits from the SNAP program, but are not able to achieve the level that's necessary in purchasing nutritious items to prevent food insecurity. We have 160 children in the program and 96 seniors who are participants in our program. We are open twice a month. Residents can come both times, can avail themselves of whatever we have, that we have purchased on their behalf, including meat, chicken, protein items, shelf-stable items, shelf-stable milk, orange juice, apple juice, and a lot of canned goods, pasta, soup, those kinds of things. And I do want to mention that we've been very, very lucky over the past few months with the schools, the grammar schools, participating in a collection of items for us. And Noreen's been wonderful. She's been the pick-up and delivery person for these cereals and soups and hot chocolate and tea, and all kinds of great donations that the schools have, have provided to us. It's our grammar schools. We've also had donations from St. Agatha's Parish School and from Milton Academy Schools. We are well supported by the families with donated items in this, in this particular town. It's, it's a great, it's great to see, because it means that parents and teachers and administrators are, are making the kids aware that not everybody has as much as they might, and they are encouraged to share their abundance. And I think that's a great message, and I, I love working with the kids on these programs. So again, hat in hand, we would be thrilled to death if the Select Board could assist us with a, an award of $62,500. That will take us till next year, and hopefully, things will be better for a lot of folks. Our current expenses run about $150,000 annually. With your help, we are less dependent on local residents to provide us with their donations also. Again, thank you so much for considering our plea, and we hope you can support us. Any questions?
Thank you, Pat. Comments or questions from the members?
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we have 2C, which is Beth Israel Deaconess, and I believe we have the President, Mr. Fernandez. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sorry, I forgot.
I'm going to re-come myself because I'm a BI employee, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Just a minute, just a minute, Rich. We have, we have, we have a refusal. Take your time.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Rich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and everyone on the Select Board. Thank you for your work that you do for the town and the time you take away from your family and other things. You do great work, and thank you for making the time tonight and adjusting your schedule. I know you guys will be here for a long night. I think my, both Noreen and Pat, keep up the great work. I know for healthcare providers, you know, housing, security, food security and things are central and impact health in so many ways. So as a hospital, I think everyone knows, the hospital business and healthcare, we've been under siege the last several years, yet we, I don't think we've wavered on our ability to see all patients, particularly patients in Milton that I'm sure at the food pantry and seeking assistance, that don't have the means to pay for both emergency or urgent care, but also preventative care. You know, we provide probably, I think it's in the neighborhood of $75,000 a year of free care, unreimbursed care to Milton residents, and then multiples of that are for people in this region. We're committed to the town. I think everyone knows, we do a number of different sponsorships to help support the public schools, Council on Aging, the, I think, the Milton Coalition, formerly known as the Milton Substance Coalition. We try to do grants and things to help propel their missions forward, to help people stay healthy, get care they need, and so forth. Despite some of our challenges, we have continued to invest in our facility. We updated all of our inpatient rooms, which is a great thing for both staff, patients, and families. We just opened a neurology testing site, which is vastly needed for this region, for the town of Milton, to have that sort of testing rate in their own community is a huge thing. And we just started updating our cardiology testing suite, which is going to be named in honor of Mark Hodgman, who was a longtime physician on our staff. So we're excited about the progress we're making, but we're also, also in need of desperate funding. We've, you know, I think in 2022, we lost $13 million. Last year, we lost four and a half. We're hoping to get to break even this year. And, you know, over the years, the Governor Stoughton Fund has generously supported the hospital to the tune of $15,000 a year, just to offset some of the free care and some of those partnerships that we provide to the town, to keep people healthy, wellness, and healthcare, I think, are all tied together. So we appreciate your, your asking us to come present, and hopefully, you're in support of that. And I think you should take the rest of the 60 grand that you have and give Noreen and Pat a little bit more, so they have a little bit more of a cushion. But I don't have a vote in that. That's just one person's opinion.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Comments or questions for Mr. Fernandez?
So, no, no, I'm good. I'm good.
So let me make a suggestion, just so we don't have to have Ms. Musto come back in and then go back out. Seems to me we have, we have $273,000 available. We have a request from the Residence Fund for 140, 132, but 140. We have a request from the Food Pantry for 62,500. That gets us up to 202,500. And then we have a request for BID Milton at 15K. My suggestion is we take, we go in reverse order and, and approve the 15K for BID Milton, and then invite Ms. Musto back in.
So I actually amended. So I actually amended. Can I just do a number first?
Sure.
And then let's see if this works.
But I'd like to have Ms. Musto here for the Food Pantry and the other one discussion, and the Residence Fund discussion.
So I increased them all. So I increased BI Milton to 20. So I'd make that, if that's...
Yeah, I mean, we have room, so.
That's why, that's why.
We have some room, presuming that we don't go big on the other ones.
Fortunately for you, this is something in my life I'm pretty used to doing.
So we have some room. All right, so is that a motion?
Yeah, it's a motion. I'm going to make a motion and cruise the...
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those, the motion's for 20,000. All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mr. Zoll is yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
And I'm going to invite, see if we can get Ms. Musto to come in for the discussion of the other two. Oh, here she comes. All right, so now we are back to Item 2A, which is the Residence Fund. The request was 132,000, but it was 140 earlier, and seems to me we have a little room here, so comments or questions?
So, yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. So they came, it was 120 for January, and then 40K ended up being the final, or ended up being the November ask, of which it sounded like about, a little less than 40K got through November and December.
I think it was 160K lasted for 15 months. That's right, that's right, Noreen, right? Yep.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that my math was right there.
And one thing I would suggest, you know, we may have needs later in the year.
I know.
So we want to leave a little, we don't want to burn through everything.
We can come back to...
I had that in my thoughts.
And, Mr. Chair, if I just add, if the trust continues to do well right now, it's earning very well, as you can tell by what is here. In economic times that aren't as beneficial to the trust, we wouldn't also have that income to spend, so just as another element of consideration here. But things are certainly doing well now.
Mr. Wells?
So to that point, Mr. Chair, my thought was to approve for the Milton Residence Fund 120,000 now, and then potentially have them come back for a view of another 30,000 in July, which would give us, if I'm correct on them, that would increase Noreen to 150 for now. I don't see her nodding yes or no, so I don't know if this works or not.
Sorry, yeah, swiveling my head around, looking at my numbers, too. Yeah, I mean, yes, when you had granted 120,000 in January of 2023, yeah, it lasted about 11 months. So yes, I mean, certainly, a grant of 120,000.
I'm only asking until July. You can come back in July.
Yes, yeah, like historically, whenever I started getting low, I submitted a request to Mr. Milano saying, okay, it's been spent down. But yes, we could sort of tentatively say July or whenever, meetings. I'm not sure what your meeting schedule is in the summer. I could certainly give an update at that point.
We meet. I don't even have to add the second one. I'm just going to go 120 till July and then let her come back and see what her situation is.
Yeah, I mean, the only...
That just gives, and the only reason, I had a different number, but when you said, you were right, the flexibility of something happens between now and July, where we know if she, if 120 gets it to July, and we don't have to, we're going to have more money in July, and we wouldn't have to, just my thought.
Well, the only thing is...
But I'll listen to what your thoughts are.
Yeah, I mean, she's, the request is 132, I would say 140, 140 for the balance of 2024. And so I'd like to kind of get that allocated to them because the fund may go down between now and July.
That's true, too.
Probably won't, but it could go down, so I would like to get, I would like to get them, I would like to get them fully funded for '24, and then if they need more.
All right, I'll take that. All right, I'll go with them. I'll take that as so. I can, I go with that. And then if you have to come back, if Noreen, you come back.
So the idea would be 140, which was the earlier request, and I think we can do that. I think we can do that. Is that fair?
Yep.
I think that makes sense.
Did you want to make the motion, Richard?
I'd make that motion to fund the Milton Residence Fund in the amount of $140,000.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll is yes. All right. Item 2C, which is the Food Pantry?
2B.
I'm sorry, 2B. 2B. The request from Milton Food Pantry is for 62,500 for 2024. Comments or questions?
So I'm going to make a motion for this. I'm actually going to round it up to 63,000, just to be all right with you. It's a 63,000, and the same to Pat. If she has to come back in July, come back, you know. Just keep us apprised of how the year's going, and then...
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll is yes. Thank you all. Thank you for coming, and thank you for all you do for the community.
Thank you very much. Very grateful.
Much appreciated.
Thank you all.
We're all grateful as well for everything you do. All right, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll is yes. All right, so we will return. We are now returning to our meeting of the Milton Select Board, and we are on Item 11. And let me suggest, without objection, that we move up on the agenda Items 27 and 28, which are executive session items, and that we take those items up and then return to open session. Is that acceptable to the members?
It's fine, we'll make them.
All right, so I will make a motion, pardon me, I will make a motion to enter into executive session, to adjourn from open session, enter into executive session for discussions regarding strategy with respect to litigation filed by the Attorney General versus the Town of Milton, number SJA-2024-0078, in the Supreme Judicial Court. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board, the Select Board will return to open session.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
My vote is yes, but please come back to me for a comment after.
Okay, we can have the discussion now if you wish.
My discussion is quick. Nick, I'm going to need a different...
Link.
Thank you. You know what I'm talking about, right?
I will send it momentarily.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Only point, Mr. Chair, is if we're not done by 10, I have a hard stop tonight, so I may not return to open, just in case we come back and I'm not here. People might think I was killed in executive session today.
We're going to try to cruise along. Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mr. Zoll is yes. And now, Item 28, I move to enter into, move to adjourn from open session and enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to potential contact and contract negotiations with non-unit personnel, specifically the town administrator. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Select Board, the Select Board will return to open session.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll is yes. So we will adjourn from open session. We will go into executive session, and we will return to open session. I anticipate, I anticipate no more than 20 minutes, and could be less, could be a little bit more, but that's my best guess. So for all those tuning in and watching, we will return to open session, perhaps about 20 minutes or so. Thank you very much. This is the Milton Select Board returning to open session for the March 12, 2024, meeting. Going to, we're on Item 11, which is discussion, excuse me, discussion approval engagement of counsel for litigation filed by the Attorney General versus the Town of Milton in the Supreme Judicial Court. As a preface, I will say that the board has an executive session, had discussion with respect to strategy, with respect to this litigation filed by the Attorney General with several lawyers and law firms, and now has before it an engagement letter for consideration. And so, are there any comments or questions? The engagement letter that we have before us is an engagement letter dated today, March 12, 2024, from the firm of Foley Hoag. And any comments or questions on Item 11?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Zoll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make it clear that I've abstained from comment on this process. When the, before the election on February 14, we were promised that this wasn't actually a real threat of the state to sue us by the no campaign. We were promised by the no campaign that there was going to be a compliant plan ready to go for the May town meeting. And we were promised that there was every intention of complying with state law and just that this was the wrong plan. We have seen that none of those things have been true. I continue to believe that the most responsible thing for the town to do, rather than engage in litigation, is to come up with a compliant plan, follow the state law. For that reason, I'm abstaining from all votes relating to this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll. Other comments or questions? Ms. Musto?
Thank you. The residents have spoken at the ballot, and we must respect the outcome of that vote and represent the residents of Milton. I have every hope that the law firm that was chosen will do its very best to fight hard and find a resolution that's fair and just for our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Other comments or questions? Oh, Mr., oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you so much, everyone. I just wanted to bring to the residents' attention that the cost of this is not known at this point in time, but there will be hourly rates that are published in the engagement letter. And so I believe our townsfolk can do their due diligence to determine what this might be costing the town. At a time when our budget has been extremely tight, we are doing a level sub-service budget this year. I find this whole thing appalling. We currently have an attorney who has represented us and does a fabulous job. The fact that we are setting this aside and going with another attorneys or another law firm just sends a message that our current attorney is not prepared for this type of work. That, in my opinion, is false. The cost of this to the townspeople will have to be paid on some level, and as of right now, we have seen nothing, nothing from the Select Board, nothing from the town administrator, nothing that says how we are going to pay for this, since I know we have no money in our budget at all. So as the residents look over this engagement letter, I strongly hope that you will figure out how much this is going to cost us, and then ask your elected officials how they're going to pay for it, because I do not know right now. Thank you.
Perhaps we can ask the town administrator some potential funding sources to fund additional legal, if it's okay, Mr. Wells, fund additional legal costs from engaging this firm?
To report back, or are you looking for some thoughts?
Do you have thoughts now, and if not, you can report back.
I would say that we have a legal budget for this fiscal year that has not been exhausted, and there are funds available for fiscal '24. And that budget is, would be included in the fiscal '25 budget to begin bearing the cost of this and any potential litigation as well that may come up for the town over the coming days and weeks. And as we get a better handle on anticipated costs, we could certainly match that up against what has been appropriated and will be appropriated at town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. And just to, obviously, the engagement letter, if we approve it, regardless of whether we approve it, it's a, be a public document, but the hourly rates set out are, rates for the firm set out with a 15% discount, and the current hourly discounted billing rate for Tad Huer, who would represent the town before the Supreme Judicial Court, is $846 an hour, and for Kevin Conroy is $944 an hour, just to fill out the information on that. Mr. Wells?
So I'll continue with my motion, then maybe I'll comment to one week. So I'll make a motion to approve the engagement letter with the law firm of Foley Hoag, as detailed in your hand to us, Mr. Chair.
Enter authorize the town...
Enter authorize the town administrator to sign. I'll be our behalf.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Just for a second, Mr. Chair, I'm not going to get into a long diatribe here. I mean, we are where we are. From a litigation point of view, I've said before, litigation is part of what we have to fight sometimes. As you and I know, we've been fighting the FAA since longer than you and I, before you and I got on this board. We took one developer, went all the way to the Supreme Judicial Court on a developer with a plan that the town did not feel was a good one. I say this all the time, it doesn't matter what you think, it doesn't matter what party you're in, it doesn't matter your sex, your race, anything. The commonality amongst us all is 026. We all live here. We all reside here. No matter how you think it happened, the residents of the town voted, and they've spoken. And it is our role as leaders to now defend their vote, and that is why I am voting yes. As you know, we've dealt with these lawyers. I'm comfortable with the path we're taking, and I vote approve that tonight. Thank you for allowing me to comment on it.
Mr. Wells, other comments or questions? I will say, I view the town sometimes as I would view a family. And sometimes you have disagreements in the family on how to move forward. And when you determine how to move forward as a family, you try to all unite. And the town, determined by its vote, how to move forward. The disagreement, in my view, of how to move forward in the family, was resolved by the vote. And so it's important for us all to unite and to move forward and to do, act in the best interest of the town with respect to the litigation and with respect to state funding. And so it's my hope that we can move forward, particularly with respect to litigation and with respect to the withdrawal of funding, that we can move forward in a united way, and we can move forward as one community and one town. And so I hope we can, I hope we can do that. So I will support, certainly, the motion on this, based on that. Other comments or questions? All right, all is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
I'm abstaining.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
I abstain.
And Mr. Zoll is yes. All right. Item 12 was the interim report, which was deferred. Item 13, discussion update approval menorah for Manning Park. Is this Mr. Zoll or Mr. Milano?
Mr. Zoll, I believe.
Am I, do I have a menorah ready yet, Mr. Milano? I don't, I think we can defer this. I will maybe say that it was very nice at the lighting of the Ramadan lights. I had a couple of folks come up to me and mention that they'd heard us talk about having a menorah and were very supportive of it. So I think, Nick, I will get in touch with you this week and price out some giant menorahs. I know, Richard, you had somebody as well that...
I do want to make, whenever you're done. Go ahead, Richard. No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. So I just, just a comment. First off, I couldn't be there this year, and I'm very grateful to Serene Ham Show again for coming to us. And when they went out and bought this on their own, it was, to me, it was really something they didn't have to do. But someone asked me, because they questioned me about me saying we should get a menorah, and I said, well, for as long as all of my life, we've been buying Christmas lights all over this town forever, so to me, it's a nonsense. For us to obtain or purchase a menorah, I think, is the right thing to do. So that's really my only fairest favor. And I mean, I just said, 026, we represent everyone. And congratulations again to Milton Muslims neighbors for the park is brightly, brightly lit, and a lot of people that live in East Milton would like to see it stayed light. I mean, they like, they like, it just gives it a nice look.
All right, so, oh, Ms. Musto.
Thank you. No, that's fine. I was also there with the lights, and it was beautiful. And a lot...
And a lot of people did remark about putting up a menorah. The only thing I would say about that, because, of course, I do favor that, too, is I know that with the Ramadan lights, they bought those. And I know with the Christmas tree, we had people pay for that Christmas tree. So, I'm wondering if, you know, I mean, if, you know, a menorah like that is probably like $1,500, I would say, about $1,200, $1,500. So, I'm just wondering if it would be better to, that the town would pay for it or that we could get a bunch of people to help offset that? Because I think it's the right thing to do, to put it there. I'm just wondering, you know, if another group comes forward and wants something down there, where, you know, the residents that did the Ramadan lights and the tree people volunteered and paid for, that's all. So, I'm happy to contribute to that.
Maybe--
I think Mr. Milano had thoughts about that, because I had made that comment earlier.
Yeah. And after speaking with town council, I think I want to follow up with him and then circle back. I'll circle back with the board and with yourself.
Ms. Bradley.
I was just going to say that I completely agree with Ms. Musto. I think that, you know, setting a precedent is not something that we want to do in this case, because I think she has a valid point that others could come forward and expect the town to pay for these things. She's 100% correct that those lights were bought by an outside organization. All we do is store it. I would assume that we would do the same thing with the menorah. We, as the town, would store it. But I really, I agree with her, and I think that we should think strongly about trying to do some type of fundraising. Not us, but somebody should do some fundraising for this. I'm sure, you know, I'd be happy to give. I'm sure many people in town would. So, I just wanted to echo what Member Musto said.
Mr. Zoll.
So, Mr. Chair, if it's all right with you, after Mr. Milano speaks with town council, I can consult with him. And then, we can also price out some menoras and come back to the Select Board at a later date with plan.
And I think that makes sense. And perhaps it makes sense to reach out to Rabbi Benjamin as well, because he will no doubt have some thoughts.
He will have some thoughts.
He liked the Quincy one. And that was the one I saw that was very nice.
All right. So, we'll put that on for a later date. Item 14, update on the Milton Community Electricity Program Renewal Process and Key Decision Points. Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Try to keep this brief, just kind of a real big-picture update. The community electricity program, where folks are opted into a aggregated electrical rate, that rate is good through this fall. So, we're at a point where we need to start preparing for renewal. A good time to do that is March, April. So, we're currently on a timetable to have a renewal priced and contracted in the beginning of April. So, we'll come to the next Select Board meeting with a couple of, seeking approval for myself to sign that contract. And the other thing that our consultant, Good Energy, wanted us to talk about was potentially changing our default option, which currently provides for 10% greener renewable energy credits than is required by state law. So, the Climate Action Planning Committee, I know, is taking a look at that, and they have some thoughts they want to share. So, I think they're going to plan to do that on the 26th. This program, and I shared the information in the packet of presentation from Good Energy. And I'm just going to share one slide here so folks can see it, because it's the success story of this program in one slide. So, when the town contracted and its pricing for electricity back in 2021, we were slightly below the price of basic service offered by the utility, Eversource. Since that time, as you can see with the blue line, we have been far, far, far below the Eversource basic service rate. The average house or customer in Milton uses about 720 kilowatt hours a month. If you were on basic service, that-- sorry, my screen has gone crazy.
Let's see, what happened there? Could you see that?
Apologize for any distraction there.
Well, I just, the screen was--
It was quite a show on the big screen.
Oh, really? We got bombed?
No. I was looking, going, what the--
The windows are going crazy. So, I'm sorry. The average account in our program uses 740 kilowatt hours a month. If you were on the program for the duration, April 20, October 2021, excuse me, till now, you would have saved $1,400 over that time span. The savings for the town of all the participants is $9.5 million in this time period. Good Energy qualified this, that this was probably the best aggregation that any community has had, because of the timing of how this all played out, where we locked in a rate just as the energy market went crazy. Not to expect similar kinds of savings moving forward, but this program has been a huge success, a huge savings for residents. So, the first decision point, really, on the 26th will be whether to continue with it. And then, the second one will be, do we want to make any adjustments to that basic default tier, which would impact the amount of renewable energy that's purchased in that basic tier? So, we'll come back with some additional information. Just wanted to lay out that timeline and talk a little bit about the success of the program to date.
So, just to restate and reiterate and reemphasize, from October 2021 through January of this year, which is a little over two years, there was a savings of over $9.5 million for the residents of Milton. And the person who drove this and really pushed this was former Select Board member Melinda Collins. And she deserves a lot of credit for really helping the residents and really pushing this project so the residents could save so much.
We should send her a gift.
All right. So, more to come on that from the 26th. All right. Item 15, discussion approval, board and committee appointments. Affordable Housing Trust.
So, Mr. Chair, if I might take this one.
Please.
The Affordable Housing Trust met earlier this month. We'll hear more about that meeting or subsequent meeting. But one of the items that we voted on was to recommend the appointment of Mr. Eric Hokinson to the Affordable Housing Trust.
So, do we have a motion? Ms. Musto?
Sure. I have a question. I know that the term looks like it's expiring in June of 2025. I know that we're trying to get appointments more on a, you know, more on a June-July kind of a situation. And I don't know the makeup of the whole group or if we've had any other applications at this point. So, I'm just wondering if we can approve for, you know, till July 1st or whatever, and then consider reappointment at that point? But, I mean, I don't have in front of me, like, for instance, the makeup of the committee for a variety of people and so forth.
There's four people in the committee right now.
Who's on there?
So, it's Julie Kramer, myself, Katie Conlon--
Katie.
And--
Frank Davies?
No, not Frank. Tom.
Don Callahan.
Callahan, yeah.
So, I guess my question would be, would it, could we do it for the shorter period and then consider reappointment at that point? I know that some of the, or some of those terms, I don't know how many years some of the people have been on at this point. I know that Ms. Bradley and I, we had worked on, and this applies to every committee, to look at all of our committees and the terms and so forth. And sometimes people have been on a long time. And maybe it's fine for this person to be on till 2025, but it's just something to bring up.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Who resigned? Who resigned? Did someone resign?
Yeah.
Yes, Donna resigned.
When was that, do you know?
Oh, that was in December. And we hadn't had any applications for the committee. I might just say briefly that we constantly ask people to volunteer for committees. And letting somebody join a committee for two and a half months seems like not a really great way to thank someone for their volunteerism. I think if this was, if we were talking about this in October, it would make a lot of sense to think about ending it at the calendar year. But if it's already mid-March, having something that ends in June, like, to me, that just, it's not how I would treat volunteer. I think Mr. Hokinson's proven that he's, you know, very engaged with the subject. He's got a great CV. I think everybody got it in their packet with a lot of experience in this space. So, I wouldn't recommend going for a two-and-a-half-month appointment, or however many months it would be. I would recommend going for one through June of 2025. It's been, we haven't gotten any other applications. We would love to get more applications. If anybody's watching and you want to apply, please. We'd love more people to join the Affordable Housing Trust.
I think that seems reasonable, sure.
All right. So--
I'll make a motion to approve Eric Hokinson to the Affordable Housing Trust.
I'll second.
And this is for a term to expire on June 30, 2025? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Item 16, discussion approval letter requesting .gov domains for the town and police department websites. Mr. Milano.
This is a transition we're trying to make. We're being encouraged by the federal government to move any of our domains to .gov for cybersecurity purposes. They require a letter from the CEO of the town, which is the Select Board. So, just trying to formalize that approval tonight.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve a letter from you requesting .gov domains for the Milton Police Department and the Milton Fire Department websites.
I'll second.
And the town, I think.
On the town?
On the town.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I didn't, I saw town as like, and the Town of Milton website. I'm sorry.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes.
See, it's 10:20. All right, Miss--
That's right.
Here, I'm going to go for you, Mr.--
I have 17.
Here you go, Mr. Chair. I'm going to take you, I'm going to walk you through the entire spring real quick.
Take me home, baby.
Request from Sustainable Milton Reserve the Town Green and Baron Hugo Gazebo for the 2024 Green Fair, scheduled for Saturday, May 4, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes.
Mr. Chair, request from the Milton Coalition to reserve the Town Green and Baron Hugo Gazebo, popular place for the Second Annual Milton Coalition Against Substance Abuse, scheduled for April 28, 2024, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.